Well, I can start. I think everyone's okay with that. You know, prior to this year, we had a shared music class. We had someone up here at preschool, Giannuccio was here for two periods, one semester, and one period another, teaching Music Tech in the home. What I would call would be traditional band. This year, we have a new music teacher, Steve Cohen, who is here for the same time, but he's only here at the high school. So, he has been working to try to build back some numbers in the music program. He has a band class. He had Music Tech first semester, and he's been working with any and all students that want to come after school, just to jam and work on things in the music program. One of the things I've been advocating for is, you know, this is, I like a vibrant music program. And the music program goes beyond just your traditional band class at the high school. So, I met with Steve early on. I met with Lisa Zaleski and Stephanie Williams, who have their bands in musical theater and dance and, you know, the plays and things like that, and said, you know, what do we think our students would be interested in? How could we hook our students into more than just a traditional band class? And the traditional band class that we had this year, you know, there's always been that stigma about marching, and I've heard this from kids since I've been here. This is my fifth year here. And so, this year, we decided to take another tact, and we kind of took the marching piece out of the traditional band program. And the students at the football games did more of a, like a pep band, okay? Where they didn't march. They do march a couple times a year in some of the local parades, so that's where the marching piece comes in. So, you know, I'm going to hand out to you, we are offering students right now for next Budget is going to dictate where all this goes, but we wanted to give our students some options that they don't currently have for music. And so, in talking to students, we've done parent and student surveys, and we did those earlier in the year on electives, and talking to Steve, and talking to Stephanie, and talking to Lisa, we decided to put out six electives. Now, are all the six of these going to go next year? Probably not, but I would assume that, and we talked about this, and Dr. Kribble is going to mention this in the opening, in the open meeting of the school committee, you know, there could be some reallocation of resources as far as who teaches what next year and what, and, you know, I've got a retirement that's happening at the high school. I've got some wiggle room with some FTEs that I might be able to work with. But we decided to offer, Music Tech would currently offer. We wanted to go with a show choir band that would play music for community and school events for a variety of different genres. We wanted to institute a guitar class. I have found in my previous schools that that brings in a number of students that if they're successful there, we might be able to sway them into other parts of our music program. We would offer a jazz-rock combo, so, you know, we're talking about jazz band, and I've heard from parents about, you know, how successful a jazz band is down at the middle school, that we would offer a class of jazz-rock combo, and then a music appreciation course, because that's another course that students have been mentioning to us over the last couple of years, would be, you know, an option that they would want to take. All of these courses are dependent on a couple things. Budget's one, student interest is another. We're still in the process of getting students, picking their electives. Most students have done so online. Our next job over the next week is to go back, go on X2, see what students have opted to pick their electives on their own, and then call those students in to pick electives that haven't chosen it through X2 at home. Once that is done, we'll be going down in the third week of March down to the eighth grade at the NOC, working with the IC in the River Valley Charter School to get eighth graders signed up. And they'll sign up both for electives and court coordinates with a student support council working with them. So, parents don't have to do it online. Kids don't have to go and look. The, you know, we'll send out instructions as to where you can look at our program of studies on our website to see what electives are out there and what electives are offered to ninth graders. And, you know, we'll see where student interest is from this particular list. So, that's kind of where we're at. You know, I'm looking, you know, when we hired our current music teacher, one of the, one of the things we talked about was hopefully expanding his role as we move forward. We may have to do it in bits and pieces as opposed to one big lump sum, because it depending, again, depending on the budget situation and where we're going with the budget, I may have some wiggle room as far as some FTE shifts and movements within the building, but to bring a person from a .3 onto a full-time in one year may not be the most, you know, best use of my resources, because then I'd be taking something from some other area to bring in music. But offering a couple of electives here and going with at least a few of these is definitely on my radar.
So, .3, is that what he is now?
Yes.
Steve Cohen?
He teaches three classes.
Now, he also is in the embrace, right? So, does he have, oh, he's not?
No, he's here.
So, is this all he does?
Yes.
Okay, so, because I guess in talking to him, it sounded like, I don't know if he's a stay-at-home dad or whatever. I don't know if his schedule is going to permit him to go any higher than, do you know what I'm saying?
Well, he's always indicated to me, he would like to have more than a .3.
Oh, good.
Can I ask you two things?
Yeah.
I mean, underneath the band, one of the concerns that our sons have is the whole we're in the uniform marching band thing. Would they be unable to participate in the band elective if they didn't specifically did not want to be in the marching band? I mean, would that prevent them from being in the band generally? Because it's just, you know, the eighth grade voids, it's kind of not cool.
Probably, yes. Because the band thing, again, the only marching would be done, I think there's maybe two or three parades that the high school band is invited to.
The confusing part, though, is on the program of studies, the first line item underneath the word "band" says, "A full week in the summer learning how to march." I mean, that's like the first sentence. And I think when students, whether they be eighth grade students or current high school students, when they go to look at that program of studies, they're not seeing playing for the community and school events here. They're seeing a full week of marching in the summer. And I'm just wondering whether you're going to get a true representative, a true representation of the interest of students with that being the description in the program studies.
Well, but again, that's why we've offered more than one band. So, if students don't want to do a traditional band and they want to do a jazz band, there's an option.
Right. I mean, that's the other thing. I mean, I have to be honest here, under the program of studies, the way it is on the high school website at the moment, it doesn't say anything about jazz under the rock combo thing. Jazz isn't mentioned.
I'm fiercely looking for my copy.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, you know what I mean. Under the description, it was about children that played electrical instruments.
They haven't heard of it.
Or drums. And they would, you know, obviously, they'd be given some flexibility about what they played, but it definitely seemed more geared towards children that wanted to do, you know, rock-type things rather than jazz things, which may include some of the kids that currently do, you know, other instruments other than electrical instruments, you know, that do jazz instruments and things like that. I mean, it kind of excluded those kids from choosing that as an elective.
Yeah.
And there's just been so much fabulous momentum at the middle school that we feel as if some of that is getting lost in the transition to the high school. You know, we spent five years reading thousands of emails from Tom Stoller about what everybody has to do, when, and where they have to be, and everything, and it's been great. It's been a great nurturing environment, and it's really impacted a lot of students. They have 25 eighth graders right now that are on the, that are part of that seventh and eighth grade band. That's a pretty big representation of the school. I mean, if you think we have, what, we have eight classrooms of 25, so that's a pretty decent percentage of the students that participate in band. If you look at that percentage, and they're going to look at that list on the program of studies, and they see that, I just, I think you're going to lose a lot of students, and you're going to lose a lot of talent. I mean, I understand there were some conflicts with scheduling, but one of the things that we talked about is, what are our options for after school? You know, maybe, maybe we can't get it into the day curriculum, but we've got this great group of students. We want them, and performers and, you know, musicians. We want them to grow and continue. And, you know, that, that's going to scare students away, perhaps, the band description, and we don't want to lose that momentum that we've worked so hard to develop. I mean, it's a lot of instrumental practices at all of our houses.
I just offer a quick thought, and I think it's important, and you may know or may not know this, but years ago, we had one of the strongest marching bands in this area under the direction of Gary Allman, Mr. Allman passed away a few years ago. But when I first got in the school committee, I actually had some conversations with Mr. Stoller, who I know very well, Mr. Giannuccio, Bill McGowan, and Mr. Allman over the phone just about how can we get some of that back. And years ago, again, the band was really showcased by longtime superintendent Francis Presnant, who used to have the kids playing out virtually at every community event available. And was a really strong band. And for instance, when, not to say that it's different now, but it is, but back in the heyday in the 60s and 70s, when, you know, we had a really strong football team, having that big band out there was really super for school support. Because that's what we're talking about here. So, I mean, what I'd like to, you know, suggest is, and not even do with everyone, if you don't want a pep band, you fine, have a pep band, but, you know, a real music experience really draws the showcasing of a big band, and, and it really draws the community support behind it. It used to be, they used to have, Mr. Allman was telling me, and other people have told me, there used to be a real simple campaign. Everyone would buy these bumper stickers that said, "Music is basic." They were a buck a piece. And all the cars in the report used to have these. So, I think you want to have some type of grassroots thing where you have a band is basic campaign, you have a strong friends of the band, friends of music, whatever, and I think that is going to help really push what we want here. But, and I'm not telling you just, I don't think it's good just to settle for a pep band. I think you want to shoot for whatever you can do and really showcase it, because, no offense, there are high schools that wind up going to play in rolls balls and all these big events, and there's no reason why you want to deny yourself that opportunity, especially if you can retain them, you know?
Right. I think there's value in the pep band as well, in terms of school spirit and all of that, but we're just hoping to have a little bit more of the just that as an option.
Oh, yeah, right.
And I think, one of the things that I've been impressed with, keeping an eye on the band and music situation in the high school, is the way, in this past year, it really has become student-centric in trying to figure out what it is that kids want to do precisely to keep them involved in music, to keep them participating in music. And I think this is, this is a step in that direction. But that's not the only thing that's being done. The work that the high school students do going down to the middle school, playing and/or singing to the groups down there to help people peep the interest and let them know that there is life after, after Stoller, from a music point of view, is important. But one of the things that I noticed over the, over the football season was where we started the pep band with maybe eight students playing, and we kept building. We kept building. People are realizing band can be fun again. That is one of the messages that's coming out, not from the administration, but from the students themselves. And they are attracting more and more students. So, I think Mr. Cohen has done a great job with that. If you see him working with the kids, he's got, he takes his music very seriously, but he doesn't take himself too serious. He's somebody that really, I think, has worked very well with the kids, and I truly see that this is going to be a growing effort. The pep band is, I think, an important part of the community. The first football game that we had, we didn't have a pep band there. We had no band whatsoever. And the number of alums and parents that came to me at that game and said, "Why did the school committee discontinue the band?" Of course, it's always us.
It's totally your fault.
It was incredible.
Learned that.
It was incredible. And explaining to them, "No, we're just trying to regroup and trying to get it back up and running. We've just started rehearsals again, and next football game, there will be a band here." And I think what, the lesson that I saw there was how important the band is to the community, which is to the point that Steve has made.
Right.
And I think that's one of the things that we need to protect, and having had a son who made it through the middle school playing the trombone and came here and dropped the trombone, never picked it up again, that pains me a great deal.
Sounds like my story.
He's like a father.
It pains me a great deal, and yet, I understand why we need to have some kind of structure in order to get that, that community-based band organized and have enough support for it. So, any suggestions and recommendations, whether it be, I think your point about the week of marching in the summer is probably very well taken. That's not a very good selling point to put right up front there.
Yeah.
It does more for unselling. So, any other ideas and recommendations, I'm sure, you know, we'd all love to hear about them, because we want to see that, that vibrant band.
Yeah, and I think, you know, if you had something else to offer in addition to the pep band, I'm sure if the student said, "If you want to be in this band, you have to also be in the pep band," that might entice them. You know, if they had vault, if they could have a jazz band, if you were also in the pep band, because the community felt strongly on that, perhaps you could do that, as long as you minimize the marching, and less goofy outfits would be better.
Unless you play football and you can't.
Right, unless you play football, and then you can't do both, and that's going to be a situation as well.
But that happens with some of the kids.
Yeah.
Our major goal was to build numbers. Our numbers in our music program was decreasing every year, long before I came here. And the goal was to pique interest in students who, for whatever reason, put the musical instrument away in eighth grade, to get them hooked here at the high school, and that by offering a variety of different musical activities for students, that would draw more kids and more kids. You're right, Nick. We did see that increase in numbers in the pep band as the season went along. You know, I think, I think Mr. Cohen is probably the best .3 FTE as far as the cost per value that we have, because he's here nearly every day. He's working in the production rent. He has an after-school program with students that he does with them. This is something that he's doing because of his passion for music. And so, you know, we have students that come and play in the afternoon, and he's, he's out there looking for students all the time. So, you know, this is a step in the process. It's not a, there's no quick fix here, in my view. It's a process to get more student interest so that we can build numbers, so that we can build the type of music program that I think this high school should have. You know, there's no reason for us not to have. And so, whether it's during the school day or outside the school day, I think that's something that's, that is being looked at by a committee of people as far as looking at alternatives to our, to our schedule. But, you know, I think if we can, if we can get some kids hooked into music here that wouldn't want to play just in a traditional band, I think that's going to, that's going to grow the program.
So, how do we make those changes happen for, or some of those changes, or make some sort of difference before our students get here, so that momentum's not lost? How do we start out in September with something more?
Well, you know, one of the things we're, we're going to have is, you know, my best salesperson in the building is Stephanie Williams. I mean, she met with, you know, next year sophomores, juniors, and seniors to sell the performing arts, the fine arts, and the music program to every student in the building. You know, she's going down to the eighth grade, because she can sell something a lot better than my parent can.
Yeah.
And she's the right person for it. So, you know, we're, we're out there meeting with students, trying to get them to take a different look at the music program than what we've had, you know, in the last four years since I came here.
So, will these be listed when, in March, when the eighth graders?
Yes.
All of those?
Yep.
Okay. And you're going to?
But these are semester-long. That's the only other thing. It's like, you know, for somebody who wants to have, you know, music be a part of their entire high school career, you have like six or seven classes. That's all you're going to get them, like, through maybe the end of their sophomore year, right? I mean, those are six classes.
But some of those classes are repeatable.
But that's also.
Oh, they are?
Yeah. Band is a repeatable class.
Well, band would be, but the other ones, I mean, I don't know.
There's no reason why these can't be.
Okay.
A show choir would be.
I'm not, I'm not open to closing, you know, students. I'm open, I'm open to opening it up for students. So, you know, there are several classes that we run here at the high school, fitness for life and other classes, that students can sign up for more than once.
So, would you change the description of the rock one, so that it's a jazz-rock combo?
I don't know if we can change the description. We'll get that out, we'll get that out to the eighth graders as soon as possible. Yes.
That it's a jazz-rock combo?
Yes.
And then the scheduling, will all the kids that want to be in these classes will be able to be scheduled in classes?
Yeah.
And that's a big concern, too.
That's always a concern. That's why, that's why, that's why we didn't want to offer one or two electives. We wanted to offer six.
But you have this challenge with the kids. It'd be nice if they could all get together, you know, all these kids continue in the classroom together, too, in their band, the jazz band.
Well, that's one of the things I just wanted you to clarify. I mean, I'm listening to the concern, and I'm seeing these opportunities, and I see this jazz-rock combo as a real opportunity. You know, if, if the kids that are already a part of the jazz band come to the high school, and they really want to continue the path that they're on, and this is something that's available to them, they could be pioneers.
Yeah, but like I say, in the, in the description, it's on the high school website, it does, like I say, it's not described as a jazz-rock combo. It is more geared towards rock. It talks about children that are currently playing electrical instruments or drums. My child plays the trombone. Dan plays the trumpet. So, that's excluding them, you know, from that elective.
Sure.
That only leaves them with band as an option, then.
I will, I'll see, at least, and Stephanie and Steve tomorrow.
But I like the idea of pioneering. We'll pioneer it. I mean, if the verbiage is changed.
I'm just thinking that, you know, you've got a four group of students who are already invested. You've got an opportunity here at the high school. If those kids move into that opportunity, grows, you know, that's fantastic.
Right. Right. If that was allowed to include.
So, but let me continue. I came in on the end of this, but I commend you for being here, and I'm sort of looking over your shoulders, and I think I know what you're talking about, and I want to make a few points, because this is a very pertinent topic, and this has come up a couple of years ago, as a matter of fact. The first thing to call to everyone's attention, and you can confirm this if I'm talking incorrectly, to try to fit another course into your schedule at this high school becomes very difficult. Let me just say that, okay? It's a fact. And I would agree that there's a wealth of experience that comes out in the middle school, and for whatever reason, it sort of dies when it gets to the high school. Particularly, and again, I don't know all the other things there, but particularly the jazz band. Mr. Stoller works very hard with those groups of kids. So, that being said, I will also add that in the seven years that I've marched in the Memorial Day Parade and the Veterans Day Parade here, the Newburyport marching band has dwindled abysmally. It's really not even existence in the last one. And you talk about grassroots, that's where you got to start. You got to rebuild it. The kids aren't going to come running to that marching band. And two years ago, a group of parents approached. I could, you know, again, just in particular, I have no music background whatsoever, but I could sit in an after-class club that was scheduled on a regular basis to meet once a week, and maintain some order and discipline in that class, so the kids weren't running around in that club. And there's a wealth of people with jazz experience in this community who would come maybe every four to six weeks to give them some work to work on in their absence. And these, I'm sure you could do the same thing with guitar, would you include those with jazz, perhaps? Or, or a choir, or a people singing? Because I got to tell you, and please speak up if I'm talking online, it's very difficult to fit a number of electives into your class here, sometimes over the course of eight semesters. And so, I would look for those after-activity things to do with some parental support and support from the community to advance some of these initiatives in the out-of-school class time.
I'd just like to comment, I'm going to echo what Dr. Orlando said. I mean, I have attended many, many football games in the last few years, and it has been very disheartening to see the band shrink. Now, I'm so encouraged to hear that, I thought we were going to be sitting here, a couple, last year, I thought we were going to be sitting here trying to rebuild from the ground up. But the rebuilding is actually already started. It's turned into this pep band, which I think is fantastic, and I think, you know, your staff seems to be on the right track, and I commend you for that. I mean, I know we have a long way to go, but I really truly believed, and I don't know, I think a lot of people in the room will agree with me, that the band was going to disappear this year. It's coming back in a different form, and maybe when we get enough kids involved in this pep band, the uniforms won't seem so goofy anymore, and then they can really knock everybody's socks off.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe not. Maybe it was a curve-up in the science board. But I've always felt the band was, they were a great representation of the school.
Mike, could we ask, I mean, say, say that the jazz-rock combo doesn't have enough kids signing up, or whatever the scheduling means, and doesn't go ahead. Say our kids were interested enough to do something at our school. I mean, would, would it be possible for facilities to be made available at high school for these kids?
Absolutely.
You know, like a room or whatever?
It's being done now.
If we did find volunteers.
Steve, but Steve is doing that right now.
Okay.
He's volunteered his time after school. I think it's every Wednesday, could be every Wednesday or Tuesday, for students to come down and just play. He's been doing that since the first week.
I mean, would he be okay if it was very specific, like jazz-oriented or something like that?
I don't see why not, because, you know, his, his goal is to build up numbers. I mean, you can't have a program without numbers. That's, you know, if kids aren't going to do it, you don't have a program. So, you know, this was an attempt to get student interest from a different perspective. Again, Steve's been the most cost-efficient .3 hire that I've ever been involved in in over 30 years in education. The guy's here all the time. He's like a full-time staff member. He's not getting paid for it, but he's still working at night with students. He still comes, he still, you know, he's invited, he's opened the doors and said, "If you love music, come on in." That's, that's been his motto since, since day one. And so, I think you've got a very willing adult who is willing to do pretty much anything to grow this program.
But he may not be so interested in volunteering a year later down the road while we're helping for something organized.
Let's wait till he says no. And that's.
I'm sorry to say.
I think you can begin to build. You can begin to build around him.
And I'd just like to add an example to it. We have a young man that I know was a three-sport, varsity three-sport player, also was a tennis trumpet player. There is no time in the day for him, and yet, Steve has reached out to him, and they're finding ways to connect, and they're finding ways to keep him involved in music. And that is, that is what I refer to as grassroots. It's going to be one by one, and ultimately, we build the mass. And so, keep encouraging your kids to be a part of music and to seek Steve out.
Absolutely.
I'd like to call to order the school committee meeting of Monday, March 5th, 2012.
Mrs. Kennedy, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Menon?
Present.
Mr. Cole?
Here.
Ms. Sweeney?
Here.
Mayor Holliday?
Present.
Mr. DeCanta?
Present.
Ms. McCarthy?
Here.
Mr. Keel?
Here.
All present.
Thank you, Mrs. Kennedy. Could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The mission statement of the Newburyport Public Schools. The Newburyport Public Schools are committed to the intellectual, physical, social development and engagement of every student. Within a culture of high expectations for individual and group learning, our students experience rigorous academic challenge, are intellectually curious, and express themselves creatively. Our students enhance their well-being by applying knowledge and skills about nutrition, fitness, and healthy behaviors. Our schools are an inclusive and supportive community. As part of this community, our students demonstrate values of personal integrity, sensitivity, and social responsibility. Our schools partner with parents and community in significant ways to help achieve this mission. Members of our school community, teachers, parents, staff, and administration support this mission every day, in every classroom, on every field of play, and in every activity.
Thank you. We're going to turn to the superintendent for his report for the evening.
Thank you.
We have a pretty good crowd here today, and this is my pleasure to, to facilitate three acknowledgements. And so I would like to acknowledge Mike Strum of Strum Chemical, and Strum Chemical was awarded the SOCAEDMA Educational Outreach Award. Now, that stands for Society of Chemical Manufacturers and Affiliates. And it was the Parsons Award. I wanted to thank Mike Strum, I'd like to ask Mike to come up, please, have a picture taken. I would like to ask Kristen Quinn and some of the Knock Middle School students, or student, to come up as well. The middle school was, I'm sorry, Strum Chemical was awarded $2,500, and that money is going to be donated by Strum Chemical to the Newburyport Public Schools, specifically the middle school, and, and the money will be used towards science education, science projects. So, I want to thank you, Mike, for the work that all of your workers have done, staff is always the middle school and at the high school, and I appreciate it, if you could come here.
Well, a couple of them are here.
Would they ask them to join us?
Oh, yeah, Al, oh, okay, and Sue, Joanna.
The principal of the middle school is here, why didn't I say something about him right away, I do not know.
Don't talk about that.
Join us and...
We're gonna have half a cannonball to hurry.
Do I have iPhone as well?
I've got my iPhone right here. That's right.
I see, I see, I just thought you was... Thank you, Mike, did you want to say a few words?
Just to tell you a little bit about this award, as Dr. Kerbel said, it is from the Society of Chemical Manufacturers and Affiliates. And it is, the instructions for the application were to describe how your facility is involved with education outreach programs in grades K through eight, whether through student or teacher education. Examples may include performing experiments with students or providing educators with instructional material. Of course, we did the, we did the experiments with teachers, we've been doing it really with the Newburyport Education Coalition for, well, since the early 2000s, we're still in the early 2000s, earlier 2000s. Dr. Barney, who is here, has been a leading person in designing these experiments and producing them, and Sue Crooks and Joanna Siantis worked on the application to get us this award. What they asked us to do is provide documentation that details the outreach that your facility performed, for example, a letter from the head of the educational organization or a school principal. Of course, we picked Dr. Kerbel, and he worked hard to write the letter for us, we submitted everything to the society, and we won the award, which was to $2,500. And the obligation was to donate this to a educational charity or to the local schools, and we would like to donate it to the local schools, the middle school, of course, middle school science department, and Mayor Holliday. I just, I just want to thank Mike and the, all the employees at Strum Chemical, it's been a great relationship for as long as I've been in Newburyport. Most recently, they were back out at the school, working with our eighth graders outside, doing chemical reactions outside, which were most impressive, but it's just another, another indication of how, how completely this community supports their school. So, Mike, on behalf of the Knock Middle School, I thank you, and we will, we already have it spent. Anyways, do we apply for another one?
Yes, yes, yes.
We will, so thank you.
I want to do, is I want to acknowledge the Vasi Boys Indoor Track Team and Coach Tim Foley, congratulate them on, on the achievement of the boys' indoor track team, Division, Division Four state title. Now, this is the second year in a row that the track team has won the state title. And, and it says an awful lot for the coach and the coaches, and awful lot for the, all of the boys, as well as the girls, I'm sure the girls pushed the boys, that's why they've done so well. So I ask the coach, would you come up with your team? Come up front, please. I just wanted to say, what you, what you don't see, is you don't see the amount of hours and miles these kids have run in their, you know, in their short lifetime, okay, but in their career, they have run, most of the time either alone or together. And so I congratulate you for all of your work and all the practice that you put into this. Actually, I was a 300 yarder myself at one time. Didn't break any records or anything, but it's a tough, but the, but indoors, who runs the 300?
Here's our champ.
What's your time?
Thirty-seven point.
Very fast, who's a mile?
Two.
Two mile? Thousand? Now that's a tough race, no one wants to run the thousand, no one wants to run the mile or two mile either. Fifty, who runs the fifty? Yeah, that's an easy sprint, right?
It makes it look easy.
It makes it look easy. So thanks, I want to thank the, to the coaches for all the time and effort, and for the parents, thank you for giving up your time, driving and picking up, and late dinners, and getting after the kids about their homework, so I appreciate that. And I'd ask, Mike, would you say something?
Just that unfortunately, I wasn't able to make the meet this year, I was there last year, and when I went on pool running that night to check out the results, and saw the first four events, and that we had over forty points after the first four events, I said game over. And when I went down to the bottom of it and saw the Newburyport score, I was really impressed with the performances that day. And I know that, you know, in talking to a lot of these guys, several of them are gonna continue their careers at collegiate level, and it's just a testament to the, to coaches here and to the athletes for all the hard work that they've put in. They work very, very hard, and they, they reap the results of their hard work, and to do it two years in a row is just an unbelievable, unbelievable achievement, congratulations.
John, do you want to say anything?
On behalf of the coaches, I'd like to thank, ask all three of us coaches, would like to thank these boys for all the, all the hard work that has been mentioned, they did work very, very hard to come from a small school and be as successful as these guys have, it's really a testament to their, their hard work and their dedication, so they're the ones that did the work, so they're the ones that deserve the credit and the glory for it, so our, our thanks to the boys for all their hard work.
Just quickly add, I want to thank first our coaches, Coach Foley, Coach Cormick, and Coach Henninger, these are three of the best, these guys are absolutely phenomenal at what they do and working with kids. I want to recognize Coach Foley for being named the Coach of the Year in Indoor Track, this was before we won the state championship. I couldn't be prouder of this team, more so for the types of kids that you are and how you conduct yourselves, I'm really proud of that. I know this was a complete team effort too, but I also want to recognize a couple of individual state champions we had, Keith Conway, and the two miles, I believe is gonna be going to Wesleyan next year. Hard to believe, this, this kid's in ninth grade, Nick Carleo, a state champion in the mile, he's run the third fastest mile time in the country, and he's gonna be competing that...
For a freshman.
For, I'm sorry, for a ninth grader, third fastest ninth grader. Still impressive, but the third, the third fastest ninth grade time in the entire country he's run, only a ninth grader, so just an amazing accomplishment. And John O'Neill, who was an individual state champion last year, and the method in which we won this, the way we won this championship was, if you look at the scores, it was really a completely dominant effort, so everyone contributed. So, just really proud of how the kids competed, and just really happy, so. I also want to say that we're gonna, another separate project that I'm kind of working on now is, there's a long hallway right outside the gym, and I've been working over the last few months, I've been gathering some pictures, we're gonna be blowing up some other pictures of our current athletes, former athletes from the nineties, eighties, and seventies, to kind of give the history of Newburyport. And this is another picture poster that we're gonna put up down in the hallway that highlights their second state championship. And there are a few of our kids here, and they're already busting each other, but, of course, Chris will brag that he was in the front there, but I don't know how it finished, so.
Three-way tie.
But this is...
Three-way tie, perfect.
So this is gonna be up, we have Chris, Keith Conway, and Chris Orlando in the, in the back there, so we're gonna put that up in the hallway, so just want to recognize that, so, thank you.
John, would it take too much time, as someone who hasn't seen these kids in sixth grade, to just ask the boys to say their first and last names for us?
Yeah, let's start right over here, we'll go down the line.
What grade, grade name?
Chris Orlando and tenth grade.
Brian Deon, twelfth grade.
Chris Superin, twelfth grade.
Jared Healy, tenth grade.
Max Bai, tenth grade.
Keith Conway, twelfth grade.
Andrew Orlando, twelfth grade.
Nick Carleo, ninth grade.
Sawyer Updike, eleventh grade.
Steven Presto, eleventh grade.
John O'Neill, senior.
Danny Holbrecht, eleventh grade.
Thank you. Chris, which one's your brother?
That's my brother.
Beth, Jancettine, is she here? Would you come up, would you come up with your parents, too? And Beth, Beth plays basketball, and she, she is, she has joined an elite group of girls who have scored a thousand points or more in, in their careers. And Beth, come on down here in front, please. Wow, to get to a thousand points, you have to score a lot of points in a lot of games. And so she's modest, because she's, Beth was talking about averaging fifteen points a game, and so just like the gentlemen, the, the boys that I mentioned about practicing all the time, Beth, no one knows about the time that you probably shoveled off your driveway and shot by yourself, how many rebounds did your father or mother get for you, so you can keep shooting, all the summer camps, the fall camps, playing all the time, it takes a tremendous amount of effort to be a thousand-point scorer, it really does. And knowing that, is Beth, you probably played with a lot of great colleagues, a lot of great teammates?
Yeah.
Right, you know why I say that? I mean, you know how many assists the kids get, in order for this person to get a thousand points, so your friends believe in you to score, right?
Yeah.
And so I want to congratulate you and your parents, because I know how much time they spent driving you around and, and doing all kinds of things they need to do to support you, but congratulations.
Thank you.
Watching Beth as a freshman and watch her game, and she is a complete ballplayer, you know, playing in college, and, you know, that's always, I think always been a goal for her, and, you know, it's been a pleasure watching her for four years compete on the level that she's competed at, and, you know, it's just a testament to her, but also her teammates, and also her coaches, that she got that milestone this year, and we're very proud of her.
Also, I want to thank her parents, Donna and Jim, Beth's two older siblings graduated from Newburyport High School as well, so they've spent a lot of time at Newburyport High School watching games. And I was just talking to Jim in the hallway before this, and he's got, Beth plays softball, so he's got one season left, and he's, he and his wife have spent a lot of time here, and done a lot of things behind the scenes for Newburyport High School, and I want to recognize that, but I want to thank you from the athletic department, really appreciate it. And for Beth, I've watched her grow over the last four years and really mature as a person and a player, and she really took on a lot of the load, especially offensively for the team this year, to score a thousand points. There are a lot of teams who basically are focused on stopping Beth primarily, and she gets a lot of attention, and, you know, people will grab her and hold her, and so there's a lot of, you know, there, there needs to be a lot of mental toughness and physical toughness that goes along with having that target on your back. And Beth carried herself well the whole time, she's very humble, she's a great teammate, she thinks about the team first, which makes her, you know, the person that she is and a special player. And like I said, she's gonna join an elite group. We're, we're gonna put a banner up of the one thousand point scorers we've had in the gym, that's a very small number, and Beth's is gonna be up there. And I also wanted to let you know that this is gonna be another poster that we'll kind of put up in the gym. This was February 22nd in Marblehead, and this was the, the basket she actually scored, her thousand point, and you can see her cheering section, this is the JV team, they all had the number one thousand on a little poster board up here, and her teammates with her. And of course, I think in the article, she just mentioned her teammates, which is the kind of person that she is, so we're gonna put this up in the, in the hallway as well, and just want to thank you, Beth, for everything you've done for Newburyport.
What college are you showing?
Beth, have you decided on a college yet?
I'm deciding between UMass Dartmouth, Suffolk, and Babson. Thank you.
It is an opportunity for anyone to be heard by this school committee. Public comment is not conversational, but rather an opportunity for you to make a statement. If you wish to provide a comment, please raise your hand to be recognized, join us at the table, and begin by stating your name and address. Do we have anyone who would like to participate in public comment at this time? Do we have anyone who would like to participate in public comment at this time? Yes?
My two awesome perspectives from the class. I've been out of court a bit catching up through Ken here, here present, and as well, and also through the daily news. And I was really keen on finding out the status of what was discussed pretty much in joint end. And just being pleased to be back in court and able to attend this meeting. It's part of this meeting of the mind. And I was actually rather surprised, I knew that something had been tabled with some of the place-based education. But I'm hoping, I'm making public comment now, only to hope that it's addressed either in Mr. Parent's, you know, discussion and discourse with you. But I so agree with the consensus here that place-based education is an important element of graduating lifelong learners and getting them, you know, beyond these walls into really doing the things that they love, whether it's, I guess if I were reporting on this meeting already and what's been discussed on the agenda so far, I would like to say the headline was "All Net" or "Making Tracks." And there's so many different ways, and I know that, you know, it's important to have the sports. But I was really, I might add, nonplussed by some of the comments made here. And I, you know, I was remiss in, I think we were remiss in engaging, you know, the administration and the school committee itself in trying to really open up about the potential with place-based education to the community, beyond NEF and what they're doing. You know, we received an email about, you know, engaging businesses partly, probably through Ken or whatever. But, you know, I think one thing that I'm hoping, as Mr. Parent talks about this, and also, of course, it's in the middle school as well, is that, you know, it's stressed to the investment part of it. You know, I know the subcommittee meeting, and I don't see that, I was hoping that that was on the agenda, I'm assuming that the subcommittees or standing committees will, you know, discuss this in part. But it's just, you know, the investment in the community, whether that's happened through the $25,000 or whether that happens through what, that other funds that used to be established that we had discussed in earlier school committee meetings that was set up, actually, I believe it was under, in 2005 when the president mayor was on city council. But I mean, I think that, you know, it's just, not that it's symbolic and that, there was some pretty strong language in here, and so I'm hoping as part of the discussion about what happens in the curriculum, what is, that you unfold what the sort of keynote of the public conversation about music, those things that happen outside of the school, during school hours, and then what happens, you know, outside of the school walls and stuff. So, I just wanted to make a comment now, because I'm going to be, you know, pleased to sort of audit through the remainder of the meeting, and I don't know how you can fit that in, but I'm sure it'll be gross.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else have a public comment at this time? Hearing none, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the consent agenda. Mr. Keon, do we have warrants this evening?
Yes, we do. I move that the following named bills of Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate to $213,912.52 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. No conference.
Second?
Follows in favor?
Aye.
Keep close. Warrants carried. Do we have another one, Mr. Keon?
No, that's out.
Well, I would like to direct your attention now to the minutes of the school committee meeting of Tuesday, February 28th. Do I hear a motion? Second?
Second.
Discussion?
I have a comment. On page five of the minutes. There is a report that says Building Committee. Nick DeCapper said things are moving in the right direction. That was a report about the Education Business Commission, not the Building Committee. I'm sure things are moving in the right direction.
Thank you.
It was not my place to say so.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Present. I just kept the meeting, I may have missed the whole meeting, but it seemed like I was voting, I wasn't present.
Minutes carried. We move on to the next agenda item, and that would be our school representative, Alex Bradley.
Hi, guys, I missed you all.
And we've missed you.
We missed you, too. So, there is a lot of stuff happening at Newburyport High School in the coming month. It's a little bit insane. First of all, opening, this Thursday, March 8th, is NHS production of Rent. It's gonna be open that Thursday, that Friday, and from the 14th until the 17th. Tickets are $8 or $15 for premium seating. And they, basically, from everything I've heard, I've seen at set, I've talked to actors in it, it's going to be an amazing show. And I hope all of you heard about the, it's gonna be great. Also, a couple weeks ago, the high school has implemented a school-wide Wi-Fi and has adjusted policies accordingly to sort of lead the demands of 21st century learning. Now, with teacher permission, we can use laptops of our global license for school purposes, et cetera, in class. And I think it's excellent and really sort of makes research and just taking things out easier, if you can do it right in class. I think the sunspots are taking notes just on the laptop. And I hope this sort of trend towards a more decentralized learning school continues. Finally, there are a bunch of extraneous events throughout the month of March, sort of in order, sort of in a series, which the Student Advisory Council calls Mega Month. After Rent, we're hoping to have a pep rally March 14th, that may or may not happen. The day before that, I know that the wellness department is putting on a badminton tournament, which they do every year. And also, the juniors are doing headwinds show, March 21st. The seniors are doing the No Talent Town Show, the 29th. And if the class of 2012 makes over $2,012 in ticket sales, I will shave my head on stage. I will do anything for money for our class, so, even that. And then the night after that, there's going to be, we're planning a mega dance, which is going to be a lot like Space Bass, but with actual, actual good music this time. And that's about it for the month, it's gonna be insane.
What was that date again, you're shaving your head?
March 3rd.
March 3rd.
And of course, I'd love to extend an invitation to all of you, if you'd like to be in the No Talent Town Show. And I'm completely serious, please let me know. All right, thank you.
We have so much talent now.
What is it that we can plan to?
2012. You know, my class advisor should have given me this look right now, so, I'm getting nervous.
Alex, after the show on Thursday, is there a forum after this?
Actually, I don't know.
I believe there's a forum for parents and members of the audience, as well as actors in the public. There will be a forum after this. So, and I believe, I checked with Mr. Parent, he said that the show is from 7:00 to 9:00, so I believe immediately following the first night, 9:00. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alex. Our next agenda item brings us to school improvement plans, I'll turn that over to Dr. Turble.
All right, so tonight, we're going to hear from the middle school and the high school principals regarding their school improvement plans. And much like last week, this is the report on year two of the two-year plan. So, I'll ask Principal Barry Hoppe to come up with a school council representative.
We have several.
And we have, Kristin Quinn is here.
Peter Holtz is here, Marilyn Johnston is here, and Karen Sutcliffe is here.
Well, thank you once again.
It'll be easier to hear in the moment. The dinner is over in the cafeteria. Quiet, it will rain.
It's been just about a year since I came before you with the update after the first year of implementation of the plan. So, this is, as you heard last week with the elementary principals, this is sort of a culmination of our second year of work. I brought members of the council with me tonight to help present, and I also, before we get started, I also want to mention the other members. Kristin is here, Mary-Kate Allen's also a teacher representative, Marilyn Johnston's here this evening, Matt Moscadin, sixth grade teacher representative, Susan Aqua Beeb is here as parent rep, Kelly Knight is a sixth grade parent who's on the council. We also have, which is kind of unique for middle school, we also have two student representatives. We have a representative from grade eight with Will Montbello, he's been with us two years. And this year, for the first time, Quinn Campbell, she joined us as a seventh grader, and we hope she'll stay with us going into the new year. Will was gonna be here this evening, but he had a hockey game, so I told him, priorities, you're gonna be here with us. Obviously, he didn't make it, but anyway, we'll deal with him in the morning. So, we broke our plan into three categories of the five. We're gonna focus specifically tonight on achievement and learning, student and staff safety, and then culture and climate. And I am gonna ask Kristin to start us off, and she will speak to the first objective.
So, one of the things we started to do pretty regularly- You want me to move over here? I'm taking your seat. I have a good porch.
Wow, wow. A lot of responsibility.
I know, no pressure. One of the things we started to do pretty regularly is to meet to review student work. So, if that's on a professional development day, or with the other teacher at the grade level, it's the kind of thing where with the other eighth grade science teacher, I'll say, okay, you bring your ALO report, I'll bring mine. Do they match up? Or we'll try to grade each others and see, would you have given it the same? That's something that I think has really helped make sure we're all have the same expectations for students. Developing and implementing more common modified assessments. So, right now, we're working on getting, what we have for testing, three different levels. One regular, one with accommodations, and one modified, so that we're hopefully being able to assess a variety of different learners. With project work, which we do a good amount of, especially in eighth grade science, we right now have two forms, modified and regular, and we're looking for, or we're starting to create a third for the projects as we go this year. So, our goal right now is the three different levels, and they're all common. The other thing we've worked on with regards to the mapping, we've started to look at the Common Core literacy standards and how it's really going to affect the way we do things. For example, we have to incorporate more informational texts in our teaching. So, with the help of the NEF, we got a grant to receive magazines related to science, which the kids love, because they're in color and they can hold them and they can turn the pages and it's not just printed out. So, that's one way, we're starting to find more resources to make that teaching possible. And then the other thing we've worked on is rubrics developed. For example, in science, we are, we've created a Common Lab Report Science Rubric. And now, we're working on structuring it so that from sixth grade to seventh grade to eighth grade, it's scaffolded and the expectations get higher each year. So, we're working on the actual point breakdown of all of that now and kind of trying to refine that. The one thing that I am excited to achieve in 2013 is to get additional time to unpack the Common Core standards and also the National Science standards when we get them, so.
Just to add one change this year, that in the past, there's a reference to the GMA Mathematics Assessment that we administer. In the past, it's only been administered to grade seven to help determine eligibility for Algebra I in grade eight. This year, with the help of our math coach, Rudy Walczak, we have administered in all three grades, and we are using that data to inform, better inform instruction in the classroom. So, that's another shift that we've made. Thank you, Kristin. The second objective is speaking to inclusion of all students. And you're gonna hear that, you heard that at the hall last week, you'll hear it from Mike when he speaks later on. We continue to work very, very hard to include all students and all learning opportunities in all classrooms. We have done a real good job of really minimizing our pullout that we do at the middle school for academic support. And the academic support does not happen during the academic core teaching time. We utilize our Flex Lock, which we'll be talking a little bit more about later. So, we've done a phenomenal job of that. Kristin already mentioned, one of the things that helped us along that path this year was a donation from the NEF, which allowed us to purchase 200 science magazine subscriptions, multi-leveled subscriptions, so that it provides different entry points to the curriculum for all learners. So, it wasn't just one size fits all, there was a variety of different levels so that all students could access. The ongoing training continues for staff members. You heard briefly, questioned earlier from a member of the audience, which spoke about the place-based learning. We were very involved this year in the seventh grade Gomi Project, the Gulf of Maine Project. And the reason it's highlighted in our update here is that we did a phenomenal job, and the students did a phenomenal job of fully participating in the environment here in Newburyport. We had, over the first trimester, I believe it was several weeks of outdoor experiences where they were in kayaks, they were in dories, they were at Maudslay Park, they were down at Plum Island. One of the most significant pieces of this was that students in our ABA program were full participants, up to and including the actual presentation they made at Plum Island the day that we were putting out all our findings and our research. One of the students in particular is, the voiceover in the presentation didn't work. So, he grabbed the microphone and stood there and read his PowerPoint before about 200 students, middle school, high school students from around the area. The place went crazy. It was just so successful. And I think you received copies of a story that Mr. Holtz wrote by assistant principal that went into the ASCD. It's the Association of Supervision and Curricular Development, that talked about the success that our special education students realized in this program this fall. And as you know, ASCD, they publish educational leadership, which is almost like the Bible for a lot of us that are in administration. So, we wanted to highlight that for you. We, again, continue to work with Dr. Craig, five years into her technical support at the district, continuing to provide training in differentiation, construction, co-teaching, inclusion, and a variety of other topics. She's working very closely with us right now as we develop our response to intervention team and looking at data. She's been with us at our last two staff meetings where we have identified students trying different interventions at the different grade level, so it's ongoing. And as it says, the last check is that several of our staff members will be attending professional development around Asperger's Syndrome this spring. Real major shift in focus on data, in the collection of data and what that's telling us about all learners. So, that'll be ongoing into 2013. Speaking to the literacy model, I will turn it over to Mr. Holtz. All right. So, next goal that we're working on is to strengthen the depth of implementation of the comprehensive-
the comprehensive literacy model, and this has been ongoing training for some time now. Kristen started to talk a little bit about this. With the, the coming of the Common Core standards, there's an increased emphasis in literacy across all subject areas. And I think that the middle school is well positioned to embrace that. You've already heard, the science department is, is talking about informational texts, and they have recently gotten a whole bunch of them at a variety of different levels. It's all about addressing kids' reading needs where they are and pushing them up just a little bit further. Social studies and the LA teachers are talking together about common practices of marking up texts. When you walk around the building, as Barry and I are able to in all of the different grade levels, you see the same kind of strategies taking place at all different grade levels. Kids are marking up the text and, and building on that in similar ways. You also are seeing the content area teachers increasingly are working writing assessment into their other assessments, and beginning to, with a, with a discussions with the ALI team, what is it supposed to look like? What is age appropriate? What is grade level writing? And some of the math teachers are even doing some math writing. So it's, it really is, the literacy initiative is spreading across all of the content areas. One of the things that we're gonna be focusing on moving forward is, is supporting that effort further, providing the time for the teachers to do meaningful work around understanding the Common Core standards, literacy standards for the content areas, and what does that look like at the different grade levels? And figuring out ways to authentically work it into the, into all of the content areas.
All right. Now, the next objective is the MCAS analysis strategies. The first two checkmarks we're real proud of. If you look at the, how our students did, if you know the middle school MCAS results in recent years, we have had difficulty with our subgroups. And by subgroups, in particular, referring to our special education population, our low-income population, for a variety of different reasons. And it's been an ongoing challenge for us to, to prepare them well enough to hit their targets that we were supposed to be hitting over time. Well, we're very pleased to announce that last year, 2011, special education and low-income populations made AYP in English Language Arts, which was awesome. Now, if AYP was sticking around, which it's not, and we were able to hit our targets again this year, our accountability status would go away, which means that we would, not that it's a very glamorous title, but you're, you're given a title of no status, which is what we've been working towards. So, we want no status, instead of, you know, restructuring or a school in need of improvement. The second piece, no warnings in grade eight in English Language Arts. No warnings, that's phenomenal. Absolutely phenomenal. That's a first for us. And then the third bullet, I think you saw this, and if you haven't, I've got poster boards made at the school, and they're hanging up everywhere. We were identified through Boston Magazine, the same article that was, that was referenced earlier. Newburyport, I believe, was either fourteenth or sixteenth in the assessment that they did statewide of high school, of school districts, and high schools in particular, but Knott Middle School was identified as the second biggest increase in MCAS scores over the previous year, second only to West Gravesboro. So we're really proud of that fact. So a lot of the interventions and a lot of the additional support that we're providing students has obviously paid off, and we continue to, to, to do that work. I just wanna draw your, your attention back to the first page briefly, to just, along with the Common Core, the implementation of the Common Core, there are 45 states that have adopted the Common Core as we speak, unless it's gone up since the last time I looked. Along with that, there is an effort to design, develop, an assessment that goes along with the Common Core. The acronym PACR is about halfway down that front page, Partnership for Assessment and Readiness for College and Careers. They will be charged ultimately with developing that, that new assessment. I don't know how many states are currently involved in that, where, I know Massachusetts is one of them. So as we shift away from MCAS, it's not going away this year, but it will be in the, in the very near future, there will be another very, very ambitious assessment that will be developed, and our students will be taking every year in place of the MCAS test. So just wanted you to be aware of that. The next, the next objective, talking about our master schedule, to continue use, effective use of flex time, to better address the needs of all learners. The only time that we access our special education population during the day is during flex block, where they work in small groups or individually with the special education liaisons and our teaching assistants. They got knocked pulled out of their academic classes. It's something we did away with several years ago, and we continue to, to take that approach. Guaranteed 60 minutes of mathematics instruction for all students. As I said, limited pullout. Another thing that we're real proud of is we continue to hit the time and learning requirements that have been put forth by the state. Middle schools often go one of two ways. They can either be considered an elementary school, which means you have to provide 900 hours of direct instructional time, or they are considered a secondary school, which means you have to hit 990, which I know has been talked about quite often. We're currently in 926, and that's with everything built in. The only downtime our kids have over the course of the day is the half hour that they get for lunch and recess. They're plugged into classes the rest of the time. The other piece that's gonna appear twice on this, that last checkmark, reinstatement of the Knott Chorus Program with 90 members from grade six to eight. Outstanding. And there's a later reference that we're having our concert on March 13th, so you're cordially invited to attend. They've been working real hard for that, so we're real glad that that's come back. What we want to achieve in 2013, right at the top of the list, is to reinstate foreign language grading. Start there, and then we'll go, you know, over, over time. We want to try to address that. And then again, the necessary coverage for staff, IEP, RTI, and 504 meters. Student staff safety is our next category.
Did you want to tap that? No problem. So we, the district has the anti-bullying policy that has been accepted and is on file with the state. And at Knott, we've been, we were well positioned for that, actually, I think we're a little ahead of the game in terms of being ready to address that. Our steps to respect curriculum that we teach to all sixth graders is still, is fully implemented, and we have trained steps to respect the coaches at all grade levels. When we have reports of bullying situations, we are prepared to use our coaching model to address them. And we, we've done a lot of work with the kids around understanding what is bullying and teasing, what are situations where we have conflicts? And what it allows us to do is when we, when kids encounter conflict, whether it's a bullying situation or just trouble with another student, we have ways of addressing it that really benefit both students. We have a peer mediation program as one of our options, and a lot of times, we will have kids being able to work out whatever the issues that they have that continue to result in conflict. And we don't expect them to be friends, but they can come to some agreement about treating each other with respect and being respectful towards each other. The, I think that, we also are working with the community, you can see in there, in terms of Newburyport Youth Services, Marshall Howard, the high school. We also work with the district attorney's office with the Community Collaborative Initiative. So we have a lot in place to address the respectful, respectful community. One of the, one of the places I think that we need to grow and work on that is really educating parents about what it is that we do, because the biggest, I think, challenges that I encounter when working with kids is the, not, not a clear understanding about what, how we can resolve things in a, in a positive way so that it doesn't come back and make things worse. A lot of times, parents will be counseling their kids to, you know, do this or do that, when we really could, could really help them if they would bring some things to our attention. So I think education of the community to the, our parent population is gonna be a big part of what we want to do, because we have a really good program in place. And I'm not gonna tell you that we don't have bullying in our school. I just feel very comfortable that we can support kids when they're in an uncomfortable place. We have, we have a lot in place to address issues so that both the student that was engaged in the behaviors that are not okay, as well as the student that was maybe the target, we're able to coach them to change those behaviors for a more positive outcome for everybody, essentially.
And along, and along with that, we continue to take student and staff safety very, very, very seriously. I tell people that my job responsibility has somewhat shifted over the years, that student achievement's right at the top of the list, but student staff safety has, like, hand in love with that now. I mean, it's right there, it's an ongoing concern of all of us. We do monthly drills, we continue to do monthly drills, secure and place drills. We have scheduled them up to this point this year with, with Lorraine being marked, being new, we didn't want to throw her right into the, so we, we schedule our drills right now before the Mullen students arrive, about quarter of eight in the morning. She has done her drills after my kids are gone, our kids are gone in the afternoon. In March, we're planning our first joint drill, building Y. I oftentimes will forget to inform the central office though, so when we go into securing place, two hours later, we get a call from the central office, usually it's Patty Quippe, "You still locked down?" "No, no, no, we've been back to class for two hours," so we have to get that, the communication piece. But we're working on it. But we do take it very seriously. We've got a very well-established and well-trained crisis team. We meet on a monthly basis, we review our findings from the drill, what happens during a secure and place drill. Members of the crisis team, the rule is that you have to have a second adult in the classroom. If there's a second adult in your classroom, you step into the hall with your clipboard. We walk the building and assess. We try doors, we make sure there's no sound in the classroom, we look for the black strips over the glass so the kid, you know, can't look in. And we make notes of what we observe, come back, we share it, and then we report out to the people that are most directly responsible for addressing those, those issues. So it's worked pretty well. We also tried a few years ago, I brought a friend of mine in from Ipswich who nobody knew, and I let him walk the building to see how far he would get before he got stopped. He didn't get very far, because he showed up in the hall, we allowed a visit, his pass, and one of our staff members stopped him, turned him around, sent him back to the office. So that was just a little different wrinkle. First, for me this, this year, and just last week, is I met with FEMA about the Seabrook Emergency Management Plan. I had to make sure we knew exactly where everything was in case of an evacuation, and where our staffs were along 95. They talked us through that. I had been, I had been sort of coached by MEMA before February break in anticipation of the visit, but it went very well. Whole visit took about 25 minutes, asked a lot of questions about where's this, where's that, what do you do with this, and, so I think we're in really good shape. We'll talk now a little bit about culture and climate. I want to give, I don't know if John's still here, John Delanis deserves a whole lot of credit. He and I have worked very closely this year for our after-school programming. I just want to say first that what we've been able to do, it's all fee-based. Children pay as they go, just want to make sure you're aware of that. We've initiated intramural bowling, intramural golf, which has grown from eight players to 30 players this past fall. Our math team, highest numbers we've ever had, and we're starting to knock off some of the heavyweights in the K-Band League. We hosted our first math meet last week, did very well. Interscholastic cross-country continues, grade six to eight, we've expanded, extended that to grade six, to make sixth graders feel more part of the middle school experience. Interscholastic track continues, very first time interscholastic field hockey. It was great. And we had about 20, 22 girls came out for field hockey this year, again, uniforms from the high school, we played a K-Band League schedule, it was terrific. We have started intramural swimming, we're actually running our second session of that because it was so well-subscribed the first time, so we're working closely with the Y to provide those services. We've just started girls volleyball, which is gonna be starting next Monday for the first time. As I said, it's all fee-based, and I just wanted to compliment John Delanis and the great work he's done with us. He's down at the middle school every week, comes in to check in with me, goes into the cafeteria, meets with the kids. It's made a tremendous difference in the overall feel of the building, and I can't thank him enough for that. I already alluded to the fact that our Knott Chorus now has 90 members strong, which has been wonderful. And I will defer to Marilyn Johnston, who is gonna talk a little bit about our community, our monthly community meetings.
I think it was... No, 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 no. I can stand up. That's embarrassing. I'm not shy. I think it was in the summer, not this summer, but the summer before, in 2010, that you brought the idea of a community meeting to the whole school committee and CAV people. Anyway, it came to us, and we, the middle school has adopted the community meeting as a mo...
Are you gonna say?
No, but this, this isn't the, no talent show, is it? Yeah.
You could have auditioned.
You've seen me, no thanks. Anyway, we've adopted the community meeting as a very important part of our school culture. And we really, I think the teachers, the teachers, everybody looks, looks forward to it and enjoys it. There are some things that we always do at the community meeting, and there are other things that are always variable. One group organizes it each time, and it starts with a greeting that's always the same. Who starts? The teachers? Who says, "Good morning"?
"Good morning, teachers, good morning, sixth grade, good morning, seventh, good morning, eighth..."
Eighth grade, "Good morning."
Well, it's a lot big.
Hopping, and then they say, "Good morning, clock middle school." It's just, it's just a big greeting, and everybody starts talking loudly and getting excited. And then the department, we've seen, we've had, last week, we had one of the scenes from The Upcoming Beauty and the Beast. The band plays the Yellow Submarine song for the lyrics that we have for the Knott Community Song now, which has really been adopted by the school, which everybody has in front of them. And that's really a nice, it's a really nice song for our grade level, our age level. It's about being a community and supporting each other and being kind to each other and not bullying and that sort of thing. Everything from, it says on here, the beach ball activity, they do, it's only last to happen out, but it's everything from seeing maybe 20 beach balls go flying through the auditorium, and everybody's trying to keep them up in the air, to hearing various kids who have done special things, like the Geography Bee winner, and kids who have won Clipper Gold Pins for kindness. People are recognized for really cool, special things, and then, I don't even know what else we do, which seems like there's just always a couple of really neat, fun activities. And we always do the song, and we always do the hello and the goodbye, and that's it. That's the community meeting.
And last week, we had it, last Friday, fifth, last Friday, we had been back from school vacation for one week, and more, more people I could count walked out of there and said, "We really needed that." So it was a good thing. But we also, Marilyn talked a bit, a little bit about the recognitions. I just want to let you know, Cal McCormick, our sixth grade, one of our sixth graders, sixth goal, has actually qualified for the state GOB, which is gonna take place at Worcester State University, there was an article in the paper about it, the end of this month. Should he win the state B, he goes on to Washington DC in May. So we're real excited about that. He won that in front of the entire school when we came, and we had our GOB sometime in January. We have representation from all pre-grade levels, and it was, I couldn't even pronounce half the places that I was trying to ask questions about, but they nailed it, so anyway. So that is our update, and I would certainly entertain any questions if you'd like.
Ms. Pien?
Very great school and student plan, as always, and I commend you and your staff for running a great operation. I've always been very impressed with how you run your school. That being said, I will bring up the same issue that I, we have spoken about in the past, and I have spoken to Dr. Kerbel about. We do a lot of data gathering at the middle school, which is a great thing. Is there a way or a stream of data that can help identify students who would benefit from moving on to the Whittier Vocational School? And if so, can we exploit that data stream and try to engage what I believe to be a bigger population of kids that would benefit from a Whittier education than what we currently have? I think we're, Newburyport is poorly represented, and I'm, I'm just curious as to what the process is. Are there improvements that you need to, us to provide resources for that can help? I mean, I know, we're talking small numbers right now, so we can't allocate a lot of resources and stuff, but I believe there's, that there is something to be said for, for the Whittier education that we are not capitalizing on, and we do spend a lot of money.
I, I wish I knew what the hook was, Dan, to be honest with you, because we, we have looked, as you know, we have studied this at Lang. Whittier comes out, does a great presentation.
We go to them?
Yeah, we go to them, sorry.
The entire eighth grade?
Bring the buses to us?
Yeah, I'm aware of that.
Yeah, I'm aware of that.
We visit them. Peter and I sit down with applicants and go through the interview process with the kids to get them ready for the interviews. They have representatives come in from Whittier, they take a full morning interviewing our kids, you know, that they will let the, the application process itself and the... I wish I knew what the hook was. I wish we knew what it was that would spark that interest more so than what we've seen in the past.
I'd like to add, as an eighth grade teacher, I go on the trip to the Whittier with the kids, and what I notice from a lot of them is that they're really excited about it when they come back, but there's some kind of a stigma attached to going to the Whittier as opposed to going to Newburyport High School that is really difficult to break down. So as an eighth grade teacher, I can approach some of my kids and say, "Whittier would be a great fit for you. You do so well in labs, like such a good hands-on learn, it's going to be such a good fit." And that'll make them be like, "Yeah, you're right," for 48 hours until their friends tell them, "Don't go to the Whittier, it's lame." So there's like this negative stigma attached from the kids around us that we're having a hard time to stop these teachers.
Okay, well, I'd just like to follow up to that with a simple comment, that's this. Secondary education, kids nowadays are going to college and graduating with mortgages. That's not to say that Whittier isn't sending a lot of kids to college, because they are, but it is an untapped resource. The stigma is what I want to call attention to.
Yeah.
And I don't mean to monopolize this meeting and this school improvement plan to bring it up, but it doesn't appear on our agenda too often, and I will seize any opportunity I can to bring it up. I think the stigma is something we need to break down. I don't think we should be sitting back waiting for Whittier to impress our kids with a Whittier education. I think we need to somehow, and I'd be more than happy to serve on any AdTalk committee, that we look at where the breakdown is in our assessment of this program and how we can help sort of change the attitude.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to solely cite Whittier, because we also have sent students to Essex Aggie that has an equally robust program of studies that we're not tapping into either. You know, we may have one or two students that go to Essex Aggie every year, three or four may go to Whittier. I will say to you that in my other life as a school committee member at Ipswich, we did a real good job of getting our numbers up, Whittier. All nine students who applied, not great numbers, but all nine students who applied a year ago were accepted, which was the very first, for the very first time that that happened. I think it was due in large part to, as you say, Dan, sort of drawing attention to the outstanding programs that are offered there. It is a quality education, and it is for kids that, you know, they talk about it, but as Kristin says, for whatever reason, it fizzles, but I think it's time, it's high time that we take that on high groove.
I passed out more applications this year than I ever have. When the kids came back from the trip, a whole bunch of kids came up today, I had three kids in my office in that day, and I think Kristin's right, there was a real enthusiasm. We did have a big spike compared to last year in the number of kids that applied this year, but not all of the kids that I spoke with ended up following through with applications. And that is a question as to, you know, why is that when they were very excited? In some cases, it would have been a very good fit.
Well, I think, I'd like to add to that, that when you mentioned the kids coming in, we're still talking eighth grade kids, they're very young. I mean, you know, I would think if the kid comes in, a parent obviously has to be part of the conversation.
Yeah, that's, I was just going to say that, you know, the kids come back fired up from the field trip, because they get, they see all the bells and whistles, but they take the application home to the parents, and for the, in some cases, the parents hear that for the first time if there's interest in Whittier. And oftentimes, what happens is the conversation ends right there. "No, you're going to Newburyport High School." I believe it's a great choice, but...
So we gotta pitch it to parents.
Absolutely correct. I think that the outreach has to be not only, and they do have open houses for parents, but again, that's only the students who are really interested to take that next step. Something that we could do at Knoc, have Whittier representatives come to Knoc and present to parents.
Exactly.
Things of that, they count, so we can get them.
Mr. Mann?
Yeah, I just wanted to offer a comment there, and then I had some other comments. I think I am really sensitive to the whole idea of the stigma, but one of the things that I would think, that I thought a lot about, is that the kids going over to Whittier are getting excited about what the opportunities are. How many of those kids get a chance to see really what some of those trades do in action? To see how plumbers work, or HVAC people work, or, you know, some of those opportunities to see them, people working in the community doing that, or having people from the community come in and say, "This is what I do, and this is how I do it, and this is why I like what I do." That there's that, that that may be another opportunity to keep kids interested if they see that these trades that they can learn at Whittier are out in the community. I just wanted to also echo what Dan said about how rigorous and vigorous this is, the activities in particular, and in my own personal experience with my own child, I can't praise enough the place-based educational opportunity that my son had this year. He's still talking about it. You know, it was, it was just well-planned, well-delivered. It was done with great passion and great rigor, and it was really an extraordinary opportunity, and I'm so glad that so many of your folks stepped up and took that on this year.
It was tremendously effective. We were supposed to, you know, keep it small, we ended up with the entire seventh grade, and it was, a lot of credit goes to a lot of different people to make it work.
Yeah, it was wonderful. And again, the, you know, the improvements in rigor, the passion of the teachers was always there, it's really nice to see it being expressed more and more now as part of the culture of the school, so I'm just very pleased with how hard you guys have worked, and I think it really shows.
I just had a quick comment, kind of add to what Mr. Keon says, that with respect to Whittier Tech, Whittier Tech, this is not your, this is no longer your father vocational school. In fact, there's areas that Whittier Tech provides tremendous education and training in the technology field, but more impressively in healthcare. For instance, if you go to Whittier Tech and you want to study nursing, you're going to leave Whittier Tech with incredibly deep clinical experience that you, simply you can't get at a school, a new high school. So there are, there are fields that, and the healthcare is a very, is a growing field. And I know that they're always looking to add programs there respective to what the needs are in the job market, but, you know, there are students going to Whittier Tech, going to nursing school and getting jobs, so that's another area where they, I think, train students very well.
Thank you. Mr. Cantor?
Yeah, as always, Barry, thank you. Great job, and I'm thrilled with all of your progress, but being an advocate for the arts, I'm particularly thrilled about the chorus coming back.
I've heard of it a few times.
I'm glad you did.
I'm glad you did.
And I would just say, there are other areas which I know that you share our passion for. One of us is time on learning, and I look at that 9:27, and I think, okay. With it not being clear, we should probably be shooting for the 9:90 and extended day, whatever it takes. You can't let that green die.
I pulled that out of the ship. It was in, actually, it was in as recently as this morning, the expanded learning time in this ship, because it's still working along for us. Governor Patrick level funded it again in this budget. There were fewer school districts that are involved this year. I've been trying to, you know, continue rather, you know, regular contact with Mass 2020 and DDSC. We just get the word that there is a spark, they were gonna, I have every intention of getting that committee back up and running again.
And that's one of my comments, is I think it made such a difference, I think you're doing so much of it already, any which way you can, fee-based athletics, just keeping the kids involved and part of your school community for longer during the day, I think is a great, great, great effort, and I'm glad you're doing it, and if we can stretch academics a little more too, that would be even greater.
You know, the most critical time that, you know, we only control six and a half hours a day of our kids' time. The time that we have our biggest issues are between the hours of two and five when they're not with us. And I know we talked about this, I know we're going to continue to talk about it on the 22nd, when he comes in with the results of the, of the survey that was done. My seventh graders did that survey as well, but you will see the word "time" woven into almost every one of these objectives and every one of these categories, because that's what drives everything. And if we had more time, we could do phenomenal things, much more than what we're doing right now. We're doing great things right now, to get to that next level. It's all about time, so.
Just want to make sure we don't lose sight of it. I know you don't, but as a committee, I want to make sure that you know that we're behind you on that.
Thank you, Barry. While we have you up here, could we move into the two, two field trips that we're talking about this evening?
Absolutely.
So...
Yeah, you have to grab my notes. I'll be right there.
The first one is Camp Key, which is a field trip for the sixth graders from April 23rd to April 27th. We have all kinds of information in our packet.
These, I apologize for not coming before you sooner, but these, this has been, these trips have been out of us for years, even longer before I arrived. Camp Key in particular, it's way in the twenties now, or close to 20 years we've been doing this. It's a camp, a week-long camp, overnight camp up in Nobleboro, Maine. We take our kids, our sixth graders up. This year, it's scheduled for that week. It's, the timing of this is not the best, but it's April vacation, then they're off the camp, they come back, and then it's in camp. That's sort of been the approach that we've taken for several years, big reason being availability. The camp is so good, it's all about leadership, it's all about building teamwork, we get really great benefits, the kids rave about it. Whenever we have parent nights, we bring the kids in to sell it, because they're the best salespeople we have. And right now, we have all but nine students signed up to go, and which is, it's about, it's about typical for us with this particular trip. And we plan that students that don't go, we try to plan similar activities back here in New Report, like we'll do geocaching with the kids, we'll do Glouva to Metro Rock, do some rock climbing, some trust building, things like, similar activities that they do at the camp. So this is one that is already scheduled, we've already had the parents' night, the money, in fact, the deadline for payment was this past week. Now, I will tell you that to enlarge part of the conversations I've had with Dr. Kerbel, next year's trip, we're really happy to announce, it's going to be in the fall. So we've been able to shift it. We kept pounding on the staff up there. It's going to be the end of October, and I'm, you know, I'm just, I'll scroll down memory lane here, and this past year, October, the last week of October, first week of November, was phenomenal weather. I said, "If there's a way I could bottle this right now and hold it off for a year, I would," but we're scheduled in for that. That's that second request that you have in the packet too. So that one, again, we get the green light on that. The parent orientation is going to take place this spring. We'll be fresh off of our trip this spring, so we'll have students and parents coming in to help sell that to our fifth grade parents who are currently at the Mullen School. It's going to be a stretch, because it's the first time we're going to have to do this, and the one, one of the nice things about the trip right now is that our sixth grade teachers know our kids so well, by the time the trip happens, the parents are very comfortable with it. This is going to be a little bit tougher sell, because we haven't had any history with these fifth grade parents yet. They come in, we're going to ask you to trust us with your child for a week on an overnight excursion. A little bit tougher sell, but I think we can do that. It's a great experience.
Motion to approve the April vacation 2012 and the November 2012 overnight trip for grade six to Camp Key.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Both field trips passed. Let's go on to the eighth grade.
D6.
D6 trip.
This is a trip that we changed, we switched gears, shifted gears a few years back. We used to take our eighth graders to New York City for three days. We wanted to do something that was more directly linked to the study of U.S. history, so we made the shift. The trip starts in Philadelphia, it's up in Washington DC, and it's gotten rave reviews. And nothing much else to say. We have made arrangements to visit the Holocaust Museum down on the Mall in Washington. Smithsonian, you have the itinerary there in front of you in terms of the sites that they'll be visiting.
Discussion? Dan?
Do you want to make a motion? I move, I move to approve that the middle school, grade eight trip to Washington DC, May 29th to June 1st, 2012.
I'll second that.
Hearing, no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Field trip passes?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to invite Mr. Parrott.
Can I do my field trip first?
Absolutely, sure.
Where are you going? Where are you going? You took all my 40 minutes, so I got ten seconds. So I'm done, so I'm just bringing up worry about you.
You just want to go over to this.
That's an easy one. So we're here for talking about a trip for the girl softball team. This is Laurie Salazzo, our new girl softball coach, and she's anxiously awaiting the start of the season on 19th of March, and she proposed to me doing a preseason trip to Newport Island, so I'll let her explain the rationale and how that's going to work.
I believe you all have an attune?
Yes.
So I actually, when I played softball at high school, did the exact same trip, and I just have extremely fond memories of it. I think it's very important to build community. These girls are going to be together for two and a half months, day in and day out, six, seven days a week, practicing, playing games. So I think it's very important to, in the beginning of the season, have some kind of bond. They're going to be playing against a D1 Rhode Island team, so it'll be very interesting to see some competition from a different state. So it should be a very enjoyable trip. We have three to five coaches that will be going, definitely three, hopefully five. We have some parents that will be going. Parents of bond to drive those that don't already have query forms, we'll have those filled out. They'll have their medical forms filled out, and field trip forms that have to be filled out.
Cause?
It'll be paid for through fundraising, so the students and athletes will not have to pay.
Mr. Keon?
I move to approve the high school girl softball team trip to Newport Island on April 6th and 7th, 2012. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Laurie, before you go, I just want to recognize that Laurie teaches basketball at the high school, but she also coaches, you're coaching basketball, and she's busy all year long. Really, I could remember her having a conversation about when you could get married, you had to squeeze it in.
Yes, I did.
A few days, and the honeymoon was way off, because she was so busy, so busy working with our students. So thank you, Laurie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Grab my stuff. I have some members of my school council here, I have parents, some teachers, if you want to come forward, if you want to feel comfortable sitting over here. On my school council, I have Tom Abrams and Brandon Sturma, and also John Delanis, who joined the group about six weeks ago. They're going to explain a project that they're working on. Ralph Orlando on the school committee, Laura Connell is here tonight.
I'm the school council.
School council, I'm sorry. It's coming out of my brain here.
You said, "Gratience."
I'm here on the school committee. Jolene O'Brien, who's a parent. Kim Scheidegger, who's a parent, and we have two students, Dylan McCloy and Jackie Cruzmark, both non-seniors who are committed for the next two years, also on our school council. We're right now working on setting up a permanent day and time. When Brandon and Tom joined the council, they had their last, last gasp class in their administrative training for becoming... training for becoming a high school or middle school administrator, and so Wednesdays didn't work, so we're trying to flush out how that's gonna move forward. You know, we definitely have, I think, a council that talks about anything and everything. I'll pass these around, this is our school improvement plan, and I'll explain, kind of, I wanted to keep the history of what we've talked about already, and the points that I'm going to hit in a very brief period of time. Mike?
Thank you, Mike.
That wasn't all.
That was great.
I told you. Done. What you have in front of you is the program categories for our school improvement plan, and the checkmarks are things that we talked about last year in our one-year follow-up. The arrows were things that we wanted to target for this school year, and the pluses are the things that we actually have done this school year. So, looking at schedule and scheduling, we have continued to monitor the impact of the new schedule on homework, absences, tardies, and the honor roll. We have looked at the homework issue, which I think has improved somewhat, I think there's still room for some improvement there. Absences and tardies have improved, but I can't say that that's as a direct result of the schedule. I think our new attendance policy has definitely had an effect upon our tardies and absences in school. We have realized that the rotating schedule doesn't impact long class retardees, because the first period of the day changes on a seven-day rotation. Honor roll numbers have shown a slight increase, but it's not significant enough to tell me one way or the other, is that an improvement? It's a minimal increase. We've had no negative impact on athletic participation, the numbers, as you well know, can vary year to year. We have had some teams with more athletes this year than last year, some teams with less, but we're still looking at the sixty to sixty-five percent range of athletic participation in high school. Our time on learning is currently being studied by one of two MOU committees, made up of teachers and administrators. Next year, we're adding a mandatory half-hour review time prior to each midterm and final exam for next year. That's gonna increase our time on learning by another nine hours. I'm still about seven or eight hours short to get the 990 for everybody in the building, so we're very close. We talked about that at our administrative meeting this morning, how I could be helping getting that done without having any kind of a budget impact. And we also have an MOU schedule review committee looking at our current schedule and other models that might be out there down the road. They began its work in February. The next objective we have is the monitoring and revising of the schedule process while incorporating the new X2 Student Data Information Center. There are a lot of things that we started last year, we had some goals for this year. Last year, last summer was not a fun time for Judy Webster, my parent, and my testa. We did not do well with the schedule process last year, I'll be the first to admit it. We have really made a concerted effort this year to move things forward, so that we do have a finalized schedule in the middle of June to the, no later than July 1st. I wanted to develop a two-year program of studies, I've been reluctant to do that only because with impending budget issues, if I put out a two-year program of studies and I tell the kids that psychology is offered this year and sociology is offered next year, and we have a tremendous budget cut, then I may not be able to offer that elective in the second year. That's gonna shut kids out who didn't take it, who wanted to take it in the first year, but it wasn't being offered. So, I think until we have some stability, that's something that I'm reluctant to go to. Our mapping and formative and subtle assessments and analyzing of such continues on a department level. Remember, we have district initiatives, we have school initiatives, but we also have, Tom and Brandon wear many hats here at the high school, you know, they are co-chairs of our NEA Self-Study Committee, and we're right into the process of gathering data and beginning to write our rough drafts of all of our, all of our reports that we have to write. So, you know, high school teachers have been very busy this year gathering that data and starting to put everything together. We hope to have all of our, all of our reports finalized and approved by the staff early next year, getting ready for our COVID-2013 visit. We are still doing the complete online course registration, we've started it much earlier this year, we're at least a month ahead of where we were last year. Three of us are going down for three days overnight vacation to take all of the data that we have collected, all of the student sign-ups for both core courses, course recommendations, and also the elective classes, and going down to hang them with all of our data to have them help us create a more user-friendly, workable schedule for everybody. We want to run literally hundreds of different simulations before we settle on one. In the past, we've only run two or three, and we pick the best out of the two or three. We have a new process for the 2012 school year as we've progressed. We have a new waiver process. Brandon, being a department head, has met with families looking to change the course recommendation that their child has in social studies. They meet directly with the department head, with the parent, with the student, to talk about what, you know, what is, what does honors mean for you next year? So that there's buy-in from the get-go, so that we're not having students opt into courses that they may have to opt out of after a month because they're really in over the head. So, we've had those direct conversations with families this year for the first time. We've given student support counselors and department heads more responsibility in the process. We're trying to open it up, so it's not, it's not two or three people who have their hands in it, it's a multitude of people who have their hands in it. We have an advisor-adviser, advisor-advisee committee working on a four-year program, that's five teachers and two administrators, and we have several teachers through the collaborative evaluation process in the English department, who are, who are really doing pre-senior project pilots this year with their seniors near the end of the school year. We've seen a real increase in the use of the new video MacLab. Tom Abrams is sitting behind me, he and Steve Mallon did one of the first projects with their juniors, and we actually showcased them in the DLL for the day for our students to watch. Our students who have produced the films, and it was on the subject of?
Transcendentalism.
Transcendentalism. So, again, this is something that a professional learning community of teachers put together, and we opened up a new area of the library, which I'll be talking about in a little bit more detail under the next category. District initiatives, we have a library technology ad hoc, they've been meeting on Tuesdays, they meet again tomorrow. They develop a comprehensive plan for a library to become really a 21st-century media center. They'll be making an N E F proposal, but to present it either later this month or the first, in the first week or two of April. We're looking at technology, change the setup of the library, new furniture, taking down some walls, having an open computer lab area, having two or three technologies in the library for students and classes to utilize, involving more classes in our library and media space, and really making it a showcase and centerpiece of our school as we move into 21st-century learning and 21st-century teaching. We are working with Dr. Craig to provide our team teaching staff additional training in how to utilize team teaching methods to the best of their ability. And Dr. Kerbel's met with a student that I am meeting with tomorrow, who has proposed they meet this Monday lunch alternative, so work continues with Chartwell's in meeting our students' needs as far, as far as lunch offerings. Under academic offerings, if you go to the top of the next page, department heads and eighth grade teachers are meeting face-to-face this month to determine proper core course student placements. That English meeting's happening this week. There's a new four-year wellness curriculum in place for this school year. We're offering nutrition, too, and moving as elective offerings in our wellness program. We've offered, we're offering new music performing arts electives for the 12, 13 school year. Our bank opened up in January for fifteen student internships for the second semester, and we're looking to carry that forward next year for both semesters. Parents and students were surveyed this past fall as to their wants and needs for elective courses. It was interesting to see what the students wanted for electives and what the parents wanted for electives, and never shov the two meat, because the data was completely skewed from one survey to the other. We looked at that, a lot of that, as we tried to develop new courses and classes for next year, and I think we're offering our kids more electives. We'll see as the schedule process moves along whether or not students are going to sign up for those classes. We have a STEM ad hoc, which meets for the first time tomorrow. I'd like to thank Mark and Angela for taking the reins on that, and then in April, we will have a science fair ad hoc that will start meeting in April. We've talked with two or three, and I think we have another meeting in the next two weeks, for a third college looking at dual enrollment programs that could be offered both outside of our, of our school scheduled day, but also over the summer, and running a summer academy. Under co-curricular offering, school culture anti-bullying initiatives for this year, our school, Student Spirit Committee and Mr. Bradley, Alex Bradley talked about that earlier, the mega-month thing. The School Spirit Committee has kind of incorporated as part of our, of our student council. They did one dance this fall, they're doing the March Spirit Month with all kinds of different activities. We've had two leadership retreats sponsored and staffed by the Newburyport Youth Services. The Masthead, our school newspaper, Alex promised that on my desk tomorrow morning so I can review it, that's going back out, out to print. Again, thanks to Dr. Kerbel for taking initiative on that. We, in the realm of clubs and activities, we have a downhill ski club, boys and girls, that was organized this winter and competed this winter. We have a girls' hockey partnership, a co-op with Mascanomit Regional High School that was very successful. I have students organizing a sailing club that is gonna run through the University of New Hampshire, and just this past month, I met with a person who's organizing an investment club for our students. These are all things that students have brought to us with ideas outside of the school day after school that we're trying to get up and running and organize and getting students to participate. We've incorporated curriculum connections, a forum, and a student, a retreat in conjunction with PlayRent to be performed, to be performed later this week and next week. You know, Barry talked a little bit about the bullying initiatives, you know, I think, thanks to a lot of work done ahead of time, I think we were ahead of the curve in that. You know, bully, there is bullying in our schools, you know, getting around it. You know, I think we do the best job we can with the information that we have, but we, you know, one of the things we've been looking to do, and we just started, we actually had the training last week, we're starting a peer mediation student-staff training took place on March 1st, and we will have a peer mediation program at the high school in effect for the 12, 13 school year. So, I'm really excited about that, and working with the group that came in to do the first training, there's some additional trainings, and we've got a wide range of students involved to become student mediators in the high school. Tom and Brandon are working on a subcommittee of the school council, and I'd like them to kind of explain what they're doing with the Clipper Compass.
A lot of the language in our student handbook, the Clipper Compass, you want me to go on like that? I'm off the ancients. The ancient days over there. Thank you. A lot of the language in the Clipper Compass, the student handbook, is redundant in places, not necessarily contradicting each other, but saying the same thing multiple ways. Some of the language regarding 21st-century learning says, "As we're about to enter the information age," or "As technology becomes more important to schools," we're there. So, Tom, myself, and John Delanes are taking a look through the Clipper Compass, trying to cull out the redundancies, maybe restructure some of the things to make it more user-friendly and more efficient of a document. So, we're just in the phase where we're each kind of reading through it on our own, and we'll come together and bring that to the school council as a whole. No real timeline on that, but definitely by the end of the spring, so it'll be ready for printing and to hand out to students in the fall.
It goes to press on July 1st, so, you know, I think we're well within our timeframe of getting that done. Just as, as an aside, you know, we're talking about the 10, 12, and finishing up, you know, our school improvement plan that's in place, and we've all, you know, we reviewed this for our first two school council meetings this fall, talked about what had been done, what hadn't been done, what needed to be carried forward, and for the 12, 14, we're looking at issues, we're looking at school culture, but we're also including, and Dr. O was involved in this, and so are the other, other parents and students on the school council, looking at the substance abuse issue at the high school, looking at policies, offenses, culture, education, life choices, community and parent outreach. We're gonna continue with the scheduling process, that's still a work in progress. I think people will have a better view of it after this year, I certainly hope so as we move forward with an earlier timeframe. We're still gonna be talking about academics being offered here at the high school, looking at our budget, the summer school dual enrollment, Stories Live, which juniors were involved in again this past week, just telling stories, and it's a great program, and we have students that I'll be presenting in Boston the weekend of March 30th, and looking at elective choices, and finally, kind of looking at student achievement and learning, looking at curriculum and evaluation, looking at formative, summative assessment, the data teams using data in a different way here at the high school, adopting a new Mass State evaluation process, and continue to develop curriculum maps and integrate the new common course standards where appropriate. So, those are gonna be the four target areas that we defined as a, as a school council as a new folder to be working on on the next days of the two-year program.
Mr. Keon?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Did you want to?
No.
All right. First of all, I'd like to commend you on a great school improvement plan. I am excited about your review of the compass, and I'm curious as to, and I'm also very excited about X2, that's, this is a big deal, X2, it's the first year. I hope that the buy-in continues to grow with the community and with your staff. I was wondering if you could speak a little bit to where you see technology in your high school going, especially given this new wireless gift you've got, and now you've done a change in policy, which I'm sure was a difficult decision to make, we've got, we've got kids connecting now. What are you excited about with it, and what are your worries with it? Could you talk about the policy change that you just did, went through?
Yeah, we've opened up the policy and said to kids, you know, you have your responsibility. We've also said to teachers, "It's your responsibility to set the standards within your classroom," and we're giving you that opportunity to do that. And we said to the students when we called each, each class in and walked them through the new policy, and again, thanks to these two guys behind me who are, who are clocking in a lot of hours, getting, getting their program together.
He's over here.
He's over here, he's over here.
He moved up. Wow. I finished my hours.
He's my boss. I bought that.
Let's say it was just school administrative.
So, you know, I think the sky's the limit. I mean, you know, I look forward to some professional development opportunities for my staff to really learn how to utilize wireless technology to the best of their ability to involve our students. You know, we've had, we've sent students to, students, I mean, teachers to MasQ the last two years. We actually had a group of teachers this year from Newburyport present at MasQ. So, you know, I think we're on the edge of something great. You know, Moodle is something that's been incorporated in various departments across the school. You know, again, I think that, you know, a role reversal of how students are presented the material and homework, I think you're gonna see a shift. I think it's gonna be, there's gonna be actually a reversal. You're gonna see more work being done, homework being done in the classroom setting, collaborative... collaboratively, and more presentations and demonstrations done online through a video that students are going to watch for their homework and bring the stuff into the classroom where they work on things collaboratively. That's the ideal setting. I think it's a process to get there. You know, I think we're taking steps. You know, again, I have some teachers who are here with technology, and I have some teachers who are here. It's kind of bringing everybody up here over the next, I'd say, 24 months or so. It would be my goal. You know, we've got, I think, once we get the library set, that's going to become a real hub of the school as far as technology.
Are we, is the Wi-Fi in the high school everything we hoped it would be and more?
It wasn't until today when we were having problems with the third floor switching off all day. But again, that's a technical glitch. But, you know, I'm excited because it's everywhere. And so, you know, rather than just having a pocket in the school or this room and part of the cafeteria, and sometimes my office and sometimes not, it's now available to everybody everywhere.
And I can add something real quick. A real test is going to come in the next couple of weeks as the English and history departments roll out the sophomore exposition and the junior argumentative research paper. And we're really encouraging kids to bring their devices and their computers, their laptops. So I think we'll see how much it can handle in the next couple of months as we do those intensive projects.
I'd love to know myself, because I believe that investing in the infrastructure of the school, I believe our investment shouldn't be in this hardware, it should be in the infrastructure of the wireless. And I think that's the way it's going right now. These things are going to be pretty good. I guess that unseen technology that we need to focus on, make sure it's everything we want it to be.
I think the other thing that I'm really very excited about what you're working on here. I'm particularly excited with the work that Tom and I are doing on the policy manual. And I invite them to join our policy committee because if they're really into being policy works and going through policy manuals, we're going through the school committee policy manual too, and we'd love your help. But the thing that I see from the learning technology point of view is what it's going to be enabling. And I think the collaboration, Mike, that you talked about is really what's exciting. And I'm also going to be very curious as I go into the sophomore presentations and junior projects as well, on how technology is going to affect their critical thinking and their ability to access everything in school, and how teachers can help them and ask them the right kinds of questions. So that they're thinking critically about the sources that they're using, about the research that they're doing, because that's going to make a difference. Back in my day, it was putting the Dewey Decimal System, but that doesn't apply anymore. This is really, truly a very, very valuable learning experience. I'm excited and congratulate you and your teachers on the approaches you're taking.
And the other key component here, Lynn Cody, has been very gracious with our staff. She did a mini-training at one of our faculty meetings last month. She's looking to involve students, she's looking to get students more involved in databases. Just don't go to Google applying something. Use the databases. We have free databases here, give it to us.
That's fine.
Epsco Host and others. And so, you know, involving all of that with some of the things that are already set up here at the high school, I think bodes well for our students really becoming 21st century learners. And again, it's like anything else, it's a process. And, you know, it's going to come over time, but I already see, you know, the excitement and the buzz in the world.
I just have one question, probably it's more for Angela than for you, Mike, because it really, oh, it should be addressed at district-wide level. And when we get to see your budget, if we can see the amount that we're spending on professional development as a percentage of our technology investment?
Sure. I'm reading it down, I'm sorry. Hey, Holly, thank you. Very exciting to see all the work that you have accomplished and the objectives that you have planned for next year, Mike. I'm, you know, very impressed. Was wondering if you could talk a little bit more about the dual enrollment in terms of what those plans are? Is that something that's going to happen this summer, or is it just?
It's still, I mean, we've had conversations, where's Mark? Hi, Mark. We've had conversations with several Salem State president came, spoke. I mean, I'd like to see something started this summer. I mean, I proposed to my leadership team several months ago, I'd like to see a summer academy of dual enrollment, but I also'd like to see us in-house take on our credit recovery. So I'd like to see two things simultaneously. So it'd be my goal to get something up and running, maybe something dual enrollment STEM-related. So it might be two apples off the tree at one time.
Well, I think that's very exciting, and you know it's something that I've been saying for a long time about our partnership with higher ed. So I'm very pleased to see that in your plan. Also, the fact that next year, we're going to see senior projects, which is something else that I think is really, really important for high school students in terms of integrating, you know, their areas of interest and what, if that's not happening?
Formal senior project will probably be the year after.
The year after, okay. All right. You're going to need some pilots.
Yes.
Okay. One thing that I didn't see on here was an update about virtual high school. And where are we with that? Are there enough programs? Could you get us some numbers about, because we saw preliminary when you were introducing the schedule in the fall, there were still lots of holes, lots of classes, students hadn't stepped up and enrolled in some of these.
And I will tell you, numbers got much better.
I'm sure.
I will get numbers out to you. Shannon is on maternity, but I will email her not to get actual numbers, or I'll get them from Julie Webster. But, you know, our numbers, we're not at max. We have not maxed out the 15 seats.
The reason I'm concerned too is that I believe this is the last year of your funding through Indiana.
Correct.
And if, you know, there is additional, you know, I think, there's really good numbers and justification, maybe we could get some, you know, funding for them to continue this a little bit longer. Right? Any threats there?
Yes.
So I think they're looking for some data from you on that too, I understand. So, thank you. I appreciate all the information.
Yep, one more, just, you know, one of the concerns of our school council, and, you know, Ralph said, "Do you want me to speak to it?" Or, "Do you want to speak to it?" I said, "Well, he talks a lot here at these, at the meetings, there, both at school committee and school council." You know, one of the issues that has been brought to my attention from both students and parents is, you know, we're in the process of signing up the classes. I'm selling the music program to our teachers, you know, prior at 6:30, and not having, you know, a sense of where we are with the budget puts a lot of things at risk. And so I'm hoping that, you know, all of the plans that we've done and all of the work that we've done, looking at adding additional classes, at least some of them can come to fruition. Again, we're offering more than we expected because we just don't know where kids, kids drive our schedule and what the classes they sign up for and courses they sign up for, the courses that we want to run. And I'm hoping we're able to do that in tough financial times.
I have one more question, and Donna's question, dual enrollment brought this to my mind. Last year, I was aware of the situation, as were you, that a student had to make up a class, and the classes were no, the classes at Whittier, the summer school classes were no longer accepted by the high school. Could you speak to the options of these kids that need to make up classes over the summer in order to graduate on time?
Yep.
What their options are?
We recommend either going to a community college and getting, you know, your three credits at the community college level and applying the three credits or two and a half credits to their diploma. We also encourage students to look at Winnicott High School, which has a night program. And we've worked with some students with some verifiable online, there's so many things out there, but a lot of them really are not what I would consider to be rigorous enough. So we worked with a couple of families in finding something that the department had took a real look at, you know, what exactly is being taught in that particular class. And we did accept those. I think that's going to be the mode of the future as we move forward with credit recovery. I'd just like us to own it in-house as opposed to funding it out to other places.
But we don't currently offer any summer school classes here within the district.
We do not.
So if we have students that fail, for whatever reason, can't meet the credits, and that being said, these students need guidance to begin with because they're already in academic trouble.
I met with a family today, and we've worked out a plan. So, I mean, we meet with each family in that particular situation. We're probably going to have two or three families that we'll have to be working with for the remainder of this school year and into the summer for them to receive the high school diploma. They're two and a half to five credits short for 110. And so we, I mean, you know, I've met with every senior that, you know, is on the bubble. We met last week, and we actually met with one twice because the information, we were told and the information that was out there wasn't matching up. And so we had a second conversation with that student about, "This is what you need to do if you want to walk June 3rd." And so we've had these conversations, we will continue to have these ongoing conversations with the students, but also with the families. Like I said, each one is an individual case that's a little bit different, but there are options out there. I'd like to bring them more in-house. I just think that students are comfortable with us, sending them out somewhere else may not be, you know, transportation and everything else. I hear that from parents, you know, and if we can do something in-house, and perhaps if we grow it, open it up to other districts to come here for credit recovery, would be better than sending our students out somewhere else.
That's great. And I got to say that I often get frustrated in these meetings because, it came up at our last meeting, so often where the troublemakers, the kids doing drugs and the kids with alcohol problems are getting all the attention, and the best of the best, the AP science classes and the advanced place with the kids who are doing very well are getting all the attention. It's these kids that are having difficulty making sure that they have enough credits to graduate within our program that deserve, and I'm sure there's a big group of them. These are the kids that we owe a lot to as well, and we should be talking about. I appreciate that you're doing it.
You mentioned with Barry at Whittier, I mean, we had, they took one of our sophomores who completed their freshman year here, but really, this wasn't the place for that student. They really needed to be in a hands-on atmosphere. So, you know, Whittier took that student, and that's the first time since I've been here that they did that. We actually proposed it to two other students here, but the families did not want that they could be.
One of your school council members wanted it.
I would like to make a point, yeah, because I've had, well, I have a senior and I have a child who's been through high school, but I actually brought a stepchild in last year, last summer. I have to say, the high school was phenomenal about, she was lacking educationally. They were absolutely phenomenal in accommodating her needs into her curriculum going forward. I mean, she is going to graduate next year, hopefully. We're keeping our fingers crossed, but, I mean, she has, I mean, and she was, like I say, she was definitely lacking, and, I mean, she's passing all her subjects. The credit she had to make up, she, they managed to double her up, you know, so that, I mean, I have to say, I don't think, my personal experience, that, you know, the children that aren't as prepared for college are not getting the support they need, they're not getting the help from the principal and from the counselors at the school are really, really good.
Dr. Delanis?
I'd like to push just a little bit more what Mr. Parent said. Now, I've been on this council now for three years and coming here for seven. The real critical part about knowing where the budget is deals with a lot of little things. For example, we talk about, okay, we've got the place-based education thing, it's $25,000. It's been two and a half years that we haven't been able to really move that thing forward. You know what I'm talking about. You've sat on that committee with me for two and a half years. These one-time infusions, another thing that has come up in the discussions of what we have talked about here, not only can you not plan for the elective that you may want to add and the sustainability of it in the future, if you don't do it early, this schedule's going to go through, and the classes are going to be assigned, and then maybe we're fine, we're going to add two teachers to the high school. Or, in, you know, dealing with the STEM initiative, we have come up with through UMass Lowell and a point of contact there where for a one-lump sum of $25,000 brings into the school an engineering curriculum. I know Mr. Parent's still reviewing it, maybe it's not one that you want, but it brings in an engineering curriculum for 30 students with professional development for the teachers included in that. It's hard to move those things forward when you don't know where you're going to be able to take it from a financial point of view. And that's the only point I'd really like to make, is there's a lot of stuff out there that can come with one-time infusions of money that don't then require any sustainability that if there is a little bit of extra money around, these are the kinds of things that you want to look at and have prepared to move forward quickly. Now, I just picked these several ones up because they're ones I'm aware of. I'm sure he has others, and he may not even think much of that engineering curriculum that we brought to him. But they're out there, and it takes some time to plan for these things. And I would say, if you have any opportunities for one-lump infusions, because if you're going to put foreign language in the middle school at eighth grade, you've got to sustain that. Some of these things need no sustainability. So if you fund it for next year, that has to be funded year after year after year. We've gone through the ad hoc committee with foreign language. So I would encourage you to take a look at what's going to be out there sooner than later so that the administrators at the schools, who have you commended and put together all these wonderful school improvement plans, can have a better understanding of where they're going to go for next year. And I think that's what's really important.
I think it would move us along.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, the next item on our agenda is a brief MSBA update.
Sure. In regards to MSBA, tomorrow, Steve Burke and myself, Anthony Kuner, are heading back into Boston to meet with MSBA for the purposes of reviewing what's referred to as a 3011 form, which is basically the budget document that MSBA uses to identify the project scope and entire budget for the Breznerhand New Models School. The form is literally one of these kinds of Excel spreadsheets. It's three or four pages long, and it is separated by certain categories of expense as well as an estimated budget. And also, what is key here is that identifies what MSBA is considering ineligible costs and/or non-participatory costs. So the school building committee met on February 15th, and they voted to submit to MSBA the submittal. It was a rather large booklet with drawings from the architect that provided MSBA insight as to what the program would look like. They have taken that submittal, they have ripped that submittal apart, they have populated some questions in regards to the 3011 document, and we are going in tomorrow to work with them, trying to understand, help them understand our position as to why certain costs should be considered eligible and that they should be participating in those, in those costs. That's not to say that they don't participate in all costs in every project, they clearly don't. They've made that clear from the get-go. Even though your project is getting 50% reimbursement, it's 50% reimbursement on eligible costs, not on the total project costs. So tomorrow, again, Steve and I are going in to MSBA to work with them and move forward. This is a prelude meeting, if you will, to the March 28th executive board meeting, where we hope to come out of that meeting with a definitive project scope and budget, a definitive grant amount, and a definitive incentive point amount as far as the project is concerned as well. That is the Breznerhand Models School program update. I didn't know if Dan or Donna had anything to add.
Just to, just wanted to add that on Thursday night at 7 o'clock at the Dewey Church on Pleasant Street, there is a community group.
I didn't know if Dan or Donna had anything to add.
Just wanted to add that on Thursday night at 7:00 at the Dooley Church on Pleasant Street, there is a community group gathering to organize volunteers to be able to roll out the additional information to the community about building projects, and would love to have all of you there if you can make it. The following Tuesday, March 13th, at 6:30, we will be doing another neighborhood meeting at the Breznerhand School at 6:30 to bring all the, you know, neighbors together in the area of our second meeting. I've spoken to a couple of them today, just so that we can continue to, you know, give them information and address concerns that are coming up at this point. The other piece that ties into these projects that aren't necessarily the school, but is the senior center and community center, and they finished the complete valuation of the reuse of the Breznerhand, and the costs are outrageous. They're like absolutely through the roof, and it would be, make a lot more sense for us to knock the whole Breznerhand down and to build on the site a new building, which would be, we could save substantial money by doing that. It was quite a surprise on Thursday night when that information came, came to light. And, for example, it's close to $7.8 million without the OPM, without furniture, without contingencies and soft costs. Yeah.
And MSBA will reimburse knocking the school down?
Fifty percent.
They will participate in that.
It will participate in that.
They won't participate in plugging up the hole?
Exactly.
But they'll participate in that.
Knocking it down.
So, it just, even things like saving the boiler that isn't that old, for example, they said we can't, because, you know, the type of HVAC system, the new energy assist, the system we want to put in, for seniors in the community, you're going to be using it in the summer, you've got to have AC, they couldn't even save that boiler. So, it was...
That's quite a game changer.
It's a, but we're going to be reusing the Breznerhand site as opposed to the Breznerhand school, and we're going to save millions. So, that's the direction we have to go in. It will, you know, again, we try, but that's where we are. And we're meeting with people on that project tomorrow, and we'll be meeting with the senior building committee also. The team will be meeting later this week to sort of talk about some of those changes. And that's where we are.
In regards to the Knop Mullen project, that project is on a different path, but still in the pipeline as far as MSBA is concerned. And the architects' MDS have been in the building since day one. They've been very aggressive, working nights and weekends and school vacations, and doing forensic analysis as to determining what is happening in that building and what options that we have to move corrections to that building forward. So, we're looking forward to understanding that work and what our options are, as well as costing those out, so that we can provide the community with an understanding as to what the scope, the sequence, and the overall budget is for that project as well.
Mr. Man?
Yeah, I just had a question. Given the, sort of the news about the Breznerhand building not being able to be reused, are we too far along the process to, knowing now that we're going to have to tear that building down, to make a different footprint that might allow us to preserve some of the fields back there?
There's no room for the fields back there. There's no room for the fields back there.
No, what I'm suggesting is that since we have to tear the Breznerhand down, we might be able to move the new community center closer to High Street.
But we still would have to have swing space for the students if we were going to change the footprint and the work is done and end. And either way, it's still going to go there. The opportunity we have now is the potential to go up two floors as opposed to out, which means that creates, which was one of the concerns, a little more green space around the site, which I think might make sense to do that as opposed to going, you know, because we're going to maintain just that one level floor. So, those are the things we'll look at, but we can't change what we have submitted to the MSBA at this point. I mean, the amount of work that has been put into, you know, the design is phenomenal.
The other piece outside of swing space is we are taking advantage of the topography out of the back of that building, that hill going down. So, that building's going to be pushed right at that hill, right at the back at the end of that building, so that that story line in the neighborhood is really two and a half floors, not three. Because you're going to be going downward to go into the pre-KK, half a floor, instead of building it at grade and then going three stories up. So, we're trying to take a use of all that topography as well.
I would add, the topography might be, you know, it's certainly a driving force behind that, but that's also the way that the school is designed in East Fairhaven, also with that split level approach. And it makes an awful lot of sense when you look at those hallways from the administration end of the building, and you can look down, all the way down both floors, I think is a good thing.
Dan?
It also, Bruce, just to let you know, just in my impression, even if you took the old Brez, knocked it down completely and didn't put anything there, there still wouldn't be an up-hump for a ball field. The new school is just that big, it is just a big building. We are, hopefully, going to gain, when Mayor Holliday speaks of green space, I'm hoping for soccer field type, you know, maybe some, not just green, but laugh usable, you know, that was my original contention. Encourage it.
Thank you. Any other? Now, we will move to budget.
Apparently, I'm a bit old for this presentation.
I know, I don't know how that happened.
No, it's a lie.
Oh, because you're in.
I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Kerbel.
I think she's using a template.
I corrected one of them already. You were on another mission, too. I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Kerbel.
Thank you.
Great.
I just wanted to make a few comments. Because the reality is, I think, setting in for us, and Deirdre's going to speak to the revenue pages and expense pages, that spells out some of the issues that we're dealing with. You know, in a perfect world, we would, we would have the things that we want, because we want to do what's best for our students. And so, looking at the FY13 budget, the sense of reality. And so, on the short end of it, I would say we would like to have, we would like to have a budget that at least supports our current educational program, as well as developing some opportunities that you've heard from Principal Hoppy and Principal Power. And we'd like to do is also continue our initiatives that we have. So, if we looked at that kind of development, maintain current programs, developing some opportunities, and continuing some of our initiatives, we would define that as level services. It's a little bit different than we currently define, which is take what we have now and just change FY12 to FY13. We're not looking at it quite that way. We can predict with some certainty what our salaries are, what our costs are for car moves, okay, but we really can't least be certain about where our revenue is going to be. Though Deirdre's done a pretty good job at least predicting somewhat what that will be. So, we're going to be going through a process, and the process will be, we're going to look at our current program, some of the programs that we have in our buildings, we're going to have to look at reallocating resources, making some changes. There will be some cuts, unless, of course, we have a revenue that addresses some of the needs that we have. But we have a process while looking at the budget. We're going to have our principals make presentations based upon the budget development. So, they're going to talk about things that they're going to need, not like a value-added. So, there's not going to be a laundry list, but in terms of, in terms of needing our initiatives, our current programs, principals will speak to that. We're just going to have to look at some of the things that we currently do a little bit differently in order to find the programs that we want. And at some point, unless we get the revenue that we need, we will have to make reductions. Now, the amount, I don't know if I'm ready to speak to that yet, okay, but certainly, as we take a look at the budget as Deirdre's going to pass out to you, certainly, that number will probably come up. You want to add to that, Yoko?
I was just going to run. Okay. For you this evening, I have the budget booklet that you're used to seeing. It is a budget that contains each site, line item by line item, program by program. It compares FY12 to FY13, and has FTEs and enrollment under the program. The very front page of this budget is called Initial Draft Budget. I actually had the word preliminary in there, Initial Preliminary Draft. This is right off the press. There is work to be done here. I can't stress that enough. We had one of our first collective budget meetings today, and I had given this out to principals last week, and a couple of them came in with red pens, and this isn't right, this isn't right. It's like, all right, just give it to me all at once, and let's talk about what work still needs to happen here. Additionally, what this budget does not reflect, and it's footnoted right here on the front, and it's also footnoted right there at the bottom of that revenue page, is we had kindergarten registration last Thursday, we had preschool registration last Friday. Those numbers are just being solidified in order to forecast kindergarten tuition revenue and preschool tuition revenue. There is no preschool tuition revenue whatsoever being calculated in this budget right now. As you know, you voted to change the format of the preschool program next year. So, we have a lot of good work, solid work to do in order to understand what that new model will generate as far as revenue and what the supporting FTEs are needed for. That work is not done here and not reflected in revenue. So, I, I'll hand this out, we'll review page two, but it is not completed yet, and it's not a completed document yet, and I think that that's very important for everyone to understand. So, here are three of this one. Yeah. Yeah.
A little drumroll coming up in it.
So, again, this budget is presented to you in detail, containing all the expenses of the budget development that was done, with principals accounting for their current educational program, addressing opportunities for students such as at the high school, as Dr. Kerbel said, addressing rigor and what the continuation of our initiatives, particularly in the area of inclusion and literacy, would be to bring us to the next level. Now, you can see at the very bottom, everyone's looking at that bottom number on page one, of $924,000. Again, that does not include preschool tuition at all, and includes an estimate of kindergarten tuition, now that we've got the enrollment numbers, that has to be reforecasted, and we have to understand an estimate for preschool tuition. As far as revenue as well, we just got this morning from the Department of Education, the FY12 Circuit Breaker Audit, that is providing us with baseline for FY12, which is going to establish baseline for FY13. Just in reviewing this this evening, I can tell you, I can already make an adjustment in Circuit Breaker. But this is the kind of thing that just came in at 3:30 today that we need to digest and make the appropriate adjustments in revenue as well as we move forward.
Can I just ask a question about that? Is it at 72%?
This is, I was just going to say, this is at 65% for FY12.
Okay, so for FY13, you're...
Potentially at 72%.
The Speaker of the House said he's trying to get to 72, 73%.
Yes. So, that's the other thing that we need to understand in these parallel paths as we move forward. What I also generated for you this evening is on page, in the first few pages of the revenue report document that I had presented to you a few years ago, that provided an understanding to you about revenue sources available to the district and what they were used for. I just pulled out the corresponding pages of the revenue report that supported the revenue sources identified in page one of your budget book. So, the very first revenue in your budget book is called City Appropriation, and the revenue report has for you a definition. City appropriation, funds appropriated by the city council along with appropriations for other city departments upon completion of the annual budget process. Revenue offsets the general fund program. I then talk about what choice tuitions are. You can see it budgeted in your budget book, and then here's a narrative as to what are choice tuition, where does the revenue come from. And it continues with Circuit Breaker, you see it in your budget book, what's budgeted, and then a narrative as to what is Circuit Breaker, how does that work? And it continues to identify all of your revenue sources for you, and where that revenue is generated from, and what that revenue supports. I thought that that might be helpful to you as well. As we move forward, again, principals work today. We had a lot of good conversations about where we go next, what are our goals and objectives, what are our priorities, what is the reality, and what do we do with that reality? We're meeting again on Wednesday from 9:30 to 12:30 to continue those conversations. Tomorrow afternoon, we're meeting, forecasting the preschool tuitions and kindergarten tuitions with the principal of the Brown School, Amy Sullivan, at the central office tomorrow afternoon to do that good work. And so, as we continue to massage this and move it forward, reviewing it line item by line item, there will be changes to this Initial Preliminary Draft Budget Book for you.
Somebody should refresh my memory. I believe the discussions around the new pre-K program were about a $25,000 deficit it was going to run.
It was actually, the $25,000 was the additional cost above what tuition would bring in. So, if tuition would bring in $200,000, it would really cost $225,000 to run the program. So, I'm looking to put in under kindergarten revolving here, preschool revolving, and bring in that revenue of $200,000, estimated. But now that we've got the numbers, I really want to crunch the numbers and provide a good estimate, a conservative estimate, but a good estimate. The other thing you should note on this page, page one, is city appropriation is at 2.5% according to conversations that the finance committee has had with the mayor, that we have had with the mayor, in regards to the potential city appropriation over last year, which is 2.5% or $547,000. You'll see that on page one in your budget book as well.
Mayor Holliday?
Thank you. I think this is part of the difficulty of when you hear, well, we need to do this early, we need to start early. It's hard to start early. People can start early, but we got Circuit Breaker today. We put out an RFQ for health insurance that's being analyzed right now. We got, we just got our rate for Maya in terms of our health insurance. It's optimistic. That could help us, but we're not there yet. The PEC has to review this. We don't have a locked-in, you know, local aid number yet. So, it's hard to, you know, start a budget process early when you don't have numbers to work with. You know, you don't, you know, you can tell people to start working on their budgets, but we can't really start this process until now. I've received all the department heads' budgets, and, you know, we began the cut process. We are in better shape than we have been in, particularly last year. I think, you know, part of it was aggressively going after tax title and, you know, bringing in, you know, $1.4 additional million plus 150 other pieces of property.
in, you know, 1.4 additional million dollars plus 150 other pieces of property back on. New growth is higher than we anticipated. So we are doing well in terms of our overall financial picture, but again, you know, there's only so much money I can shift towards, you know, funding the operations of the schools. Last year it was 1.4%, this year, two and a half percent. And, you know, we're trying again to look at, once we have a better sense of healthcare, whether or not those costs in particular, but we still have to take into account retirees who aren't, who can't be shifted from the 75-25, the, you know, Blue Cross Blue Shield Plan that the city provides currently because they're not eligible for medics yet. You know, so we've got to cover that gap for retirees also. We have several retirees coming, which, you know, the payouts on those contracts are steep and so they dig deep into the budget when we do this. So we're trying to set up a new stabilization retirement pension account, which we need to do this in terms of looking at, you know, the future of the city in terms of, you know, being able to meet those kinds of expenses. So although the, the bottom line right now that, that I think Deirdre has presented and Mark has presented to you is, makes us all gasp, I think we at least have a good starting place right now. We're, you know, on the city side, we're about a million four below where we would like to be, but that's last year we started at six million that we had to be getting cut. So we're in better shape than we were last year is what I can say and we begin our budget workshops with city departments internally next week. We start with Brown and so we have to just, you know, do our diligence and start marching through all of these budgets and find is, you know, where we can, we can cut. And that's, that's, you know, or where we can consolidate or where we can have greater efficiencies or whatever it takes that we can begin to, you know, drop that number down and hopefully be able to put something back in the budget. So, that's where we are. So, Deirdre, do you expect a new page one by, well, by the time we have our first budget meeting on Wednesday evening?
I do not.
Okay.
I would expect a, let me rephrase. I might have a new budget page one for you reflecting preschool tuitions, but the back of detail would not be available until the Brown School budget presentation or shortly thereafter.
I would suspect that before we finalize this, we'll probably have six versions of page one.
Exactly, exactly.
Right.
Exactly.
I just didn't know what to expect for Wednesday night, that's all. I just...
I think that the overall objective for Wednesday night is to, you know, let's talk about the Brown School budget and the Brown School budget board.
Is it Brown?
I'm sorry, excuse me, President.
No, I'm just, because I've changed a couple times.
You said Brown.
So let's be...
Are we not at Brown?
No, we're at Brezner. I would be sitting at the Brezner.
Donna and I will be at Brown.
Yeah.
Six thirty same time.
It's Wednesday night.
The gymnasium.
Mr. Mann?
Just a couple of questions. Deirdre, thank you very much for pulling this together. It's really, you know, again, as the mayor said, this gives us a snapshot that we'll continue to change, sort of like a moving picture of some sort. I wanted to ask just a little bit about choice tuitions. Do you firsthand know what we budgeted this year, what we expected for choice revenues and are, how, where are we relative to that?
We budgeted $1,081,800, which is under FY12 actual, that was your actual budget.
Mm-hmm.
In forecasting the second quarter, we get those quarterly payments, obviously at each quarter. At the second quarter, we were a little short. However, as you know, the third quarter generates the special education increment, which typically covers any shortfall or gets us close enough to cover any shortfall, but that's the forecasting work that we typically do for the FY13, I'm sorry, FY12 third quarter. Having said that, that sometime changes the following fiscal year budget because of that forecasting done at the third quarter time, which again gets back into the timeliness of the, the budget, budget development.
Right, and that sort of leads me to my second question, which is the, the projection that you made, understanding it's a projection. That's a projection that we are making before we've made any decision about where we're opening or have heard your recommendations about where we're opening choice, so that...
Right. That reduction of $65,000 represents 13 seniors from Newburyport High School that are graduating.
Right, and, and again, we would be presented with a set of recommendations that could potentially, projections eliminate that or...
You might have left though, Bruce, before, but we did like grade nine.
But what you did was you voted to continue to participate in the school choice program. Then you voted to open up grade nine based on slots available. And as you've heard earlier, the challenge that we had regarding slots available is we've already had students sign up for their program of studies for their course offerings next year. It's dependent on the FTEs that are in the budget as far as the budget development. If you lose FTEs, you're going to lose those classes that children and students have already signed up for. They're going to have to go elsewhere. So the seat availability isn't determined truly until you understand fully what your FTEs are. So even though you declared grade nine open, you don't have slots open yet because we're on, we're not fully aware of what the FTE picture looks like in the high school next year. That's the challenge as far as timing is concerned, but that does represent the graduating students.
Good. Thank you. You know, I've been through this a number of times and I usually assume that that's the graduating amount. And again, I know that you just got the Circuit Breaker, you talked about there being an adjustment and I'm assuming that, that we're looking at an adjustment potentially upward and not downward.
It's an upward adjustment, yes.
Okay.
The exact adjustment? I'm not sure.
Yeah, I understand. I just want to adjust. Just saying it was an adjustment was kind of vague for me, so I wanted to see where it was headed, so that's helpful.
Any further discussion at this point? We have now come to a second session of public comment. If anyone would like to make a public comment, please join us at the table and state your name and address. And could you please try to keep your comments to about two minutes?
I'm sorry to take, I'll be two minutes. The mayor had inquired about the expectations of the budget workshops or meetings that begin on, on Wednesday and unfortunately, I'm projecting I'll probably miss the beginning and the end, but I'm really excited about, you know, the opportunity and I know there's discussions about capturing it in various media. And, you know, I just was wondering is, as you had this, this discussion with the administration and yourselves, how to present it out to the community and so imperative, you know, as you start to, to evolve the, you know, with SIP and, and sort of merge that with the budget itself. So I was just kind of wondering, especially since I would be missing some of it and I'm sure I, this is echoed in the community, how, how best to impress the data, the impressive data that's there. I mean, I, we had attended the, the first workshop back in, I think it was in January of, of last year and it was, it wasn't captured in that way and yet it was, it was really something that's so worthwhile and I know it takes a little bit more effort to do that, but I was just kind of thinking, especially this year, with what's happening with MSBA and there was a commitment at the onset to really sort of tie in the programming and all of that. So, you know, just to echo some of the things that was, were discussed here, but, you know, and, and the mayor had asked about that expectation, but there's a great word anticipation in terms of that. So just to build that anticipation and what's going to follow, I should start to talk about, you know, the buildings itself, so, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further public comments? Entertain a motion to, someone?
No executive session?
No.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.